Microsoft 365.
Mayor and council, just so you know, we are currently live on YouTube, just so you know. Still waiting for a few other people, but.
Brittany, are you up?
I don't dress up, but I will, I will, what, what, what else am I doing? I don't dance.
We're doing the thriller dance.
What?
We're doing the thriller dance.
No, I don't do that, but I can, I can, I will hire a person to do that. It will do that.
You'll have a proxy.
Yeah, I'll hire someone.
A clone.
Well, my daughter still lives with me because COVID, so she couldn't move out, so she has to do stuff for me, so she can do that.
It's a little of rent.
Yeah, I have people for that stuff.
For those of you who are waiting, it looks like we're going to start a couple of minutes late because of logistics and we're getting some stuff printed out maybe.
Do you have TikTok though?
Do you?
TikTok.
Do you do TikTok?
No, I don't. But I have it.
It's kind of like having a book and not reading, right?
Yeah, something like that.
The language isn't there.
Yeah, I believe that.
Not all of it.
Well, I think he gets a pass for whatever he said.
I'd probably say bad things if a cougar is chasing me too.
I haven't seen the video, I've seen the story, but.
I watched part of the video and that, when she comes.
Right now? That's where. And she does that multiple times, right?
Kim, does that make you nervous to trail run?
Probably cougar.
Yeah.
Uh, I would never trail run by myself, but yes, had I seen. Yeah, I would go to the end one time and I swear it was about that and I ran. Boxed my hand really. You threw your arms at it.
I would have done it the first minute.
He said every time he did it, charged at him.
No, he turned around, I know, I mean, it's, it's, it's easy to see now, but it's like.
Oh, I would have, he did really good.
He did.
I almost went down the rocks and started charging back because you know.
Because I, I don't know, the first time that thing did that to me, that it was so easy to run, like, no, if you did, you'd have been arrested. I had a bear that, when I was with scouts from. I'll say that for a long time. Kind of scared away, the first time it just came out of town, looked at us. Put his head back. I was with, we got separated and I was with three little young boys and. And I think it was. Well, one of them was my son, so. But yes, I could have outrun him. But he was as close as me, me, me to you. So, looks like everybody's here, are you ready to start Nathan? Okay, let's, Kurt, can I invite you to do the opening prayer?
Ourly Father, at this time, as we come before thee as a city council and residents and staff, that we're thankful for the opportunity to be able to be here and the freedoms we have in this country, we're thankful for the beautiful weather which we're having and also the city which we live in. Only Father, we ask the blessing to be upon those who might be in our community and also in our state and nation and throughout the world who might be struggling with the COVID, that they might be able to be boy or adopt, that they might know how to be able to heal themselves, that go forth, to get the medical attention that might be needed, but those also who are, be mindful of the situations that they're in. Heavenly Father, be with us as a council tonight as we discuss the different business going on inside the city and also with open space, that we might be able to be mindful of the needs of the residents in Highland and come up with options and solutions. Heavenly Father, also please be with our families while we're away from them, that they might be safe. And this we say to Mr. Christ, amen.
Thank you. Couple of things before we get started. Do we have a hard end date that, or end time that we want to establish? Because we, we could be here till two in the morning if we want to, so do we want to set a, a hard?
Let's just say seven thirty.
I mean, it could be nine, nine thirty or ten.
I would say ten.
Ten, okay, so that's hard stop. Now, staff has a ton of material to go through, so we're not going to be able to solve a lot of problems today and we can't vote on anything, I think, but questions are in order. I would like to exercise a little executive privilege here, Nathan, if you don't mind, and I put a handout on everybody's desk. This is something I, I went through with a few of you, but not all of you, and you all didn't get the same thing, so I would just like to walk through the data that I've collected from surveys and just open space information that I put together and, and city information. Real quick, so the, the first chart, it's on the third page, it has quality of life ratings by year and you'll notice that there's kind of a general trend, if you take the light green and dark green piece colors, which are good and excellent, you see it, it looks like it's going up over the last five years. If you look at the city public works rating, you'll see in all categories, quality of parks, quality of trails, road maintenance, snow removal, except for road maintenance, that it drops in 2019. That's the year that we had a lot of things going on in the city that I think made the ratings go down across the board. I told Todd, yeah, you had the lowest rating, but you're on an upward trend with roads. So that was the one shining star in that is that our, our ratings on roads continued to go up, but we had a library circumstance, we had the pickleball, we had some open space issues and, and there were a lot of people that were unhappy with the city. If you look at elected official ratings, we took a hit in 2019. Bounced back up in 2020. If you look at staff on the next page, they took a little bit of a hit, certainly on the excellent side. Excellent, good combined, not as much, but they took a hit in 2019. From the survey data that we collected this year in 2020, I was able to extrapolate park and trail usage per household based on the responses that people provided. And in the survey, we asked people if you lived in open space or not, and so I was able to segregate the responses and you can see that in both parks and trails, open space is higher, has higher usage, especially trails. And that trails get used significantly more, almost three times as much as parks do. The next slide is park usage. You can see that just over a third of it is an organized play and the rest of it, seventy, sixty-one percent is passive play and then there's a sliver of other. I'm not sure what other is, but there was another category. If you look at trail usage, the, almost half of it was, was for exercise. So that's Brian and Kim and Scott. Not the mayor, not Kurt. Not Brittany, right, but not, anyway, so half.
Exercise?
Sorry, on the trails, you're not a runner, right? We're talking about running on trails. I am digging a hole, so I'm just going to stop.
I also don't have a riding bike, that's a true story.
Okay, so definitely you're not on the trails for bikes. To and from parks is a little, is about a third of the rest and then you've got to and from other and to and from school are almost thirds of the rest. If we go to the next slide, in 2019 and 2018, we asked, what is your willingness to increase funding for different categories of items? In 2019, parks and trails were about equal and, but below fifty percent. In 2020, they're close to fifty percent, just under. And you'll, but you'll notice one thing that's of note is that on 2020, the, the very unlikely is a lot, is a pretty big chunk of that a no vote and the very likely is half or less of the, the, the positive side of that equation. That just says if, if, if we do want to look at increasing funding for parks and trails, it's still a heavy lift. And now if we go to open space related charts and graphs, this data I updated as of the end of September this year. So we're seventy-four percent non-open space, twenty-six percent open space. There's an average lot size. Open space is a third of an acre, a non-open space is point six. If you look at the profile of the lots within an acreage range, you'll see it's really heavily weighted towards a quarter to a half an acre. And then the, the next biggest chunk is a half to three quarters of an acre. The other slide on that page is a general fund open space subsidy. Right now, if we take the, the current budget, it's about a hundred and seventy-one thousand in the negative. That means general fund is, is subsidizing the, the park, the open space parks and trails. There's nothing wrong with that, it just, that's how we're allocating our money. I, I did an exercise of taking out park strips, trails, all trails and bigger parks and reservable parks out of the, out of the mix and it gets us to just over twelve thousand in the red. Of note, in open space right now, there are fifty-one unbuilt lots. The stuff up in Beacon Hills is where the biggest chunk of that is. If we developed, if all those were developed, we would be at zero, just about. We did the math the other day and if, if all of those were developed, then the, the current twenty dollar fee would almost exactly cover the, the proposed allocation. Now that, there's, there's still debates on that. I'm not king, so it's just my proposal. But if, if we take, if those are all built, then we're, twenty bucks is correct. And then on the last page is just my recommendations on, on how to move forward on different things. You know, eliminate trails from open space costs, eliminate non-neighborhood parks from open space costs. Allocate ten to twenty-five percent of cost of open space to the general fund. Base the open space fee on actual cost less the amount the general funds contributes. And then if we do that and the fee ends up being less than twenty dollars, we can't really implement a change until we find a revenue source to replace that money. And the RAP tax, the recreation arts and parks, sales tax is an option that we can use. The, the good thing about that is if, if we were to approve it, it would go on the ballot and the voters would need to approve it. And if we, and there's a point one percent that we can add on to sales tax, if we were to do that, that means everybody that chops in Highland contributes to our parks and trails. And we do have a lot of people that use the splash pad that chop in Highland and, and people that use Highland Glen, so we do have a lot of extra city use of our parks, so this would be a way to kind of collect additional money from people not in Highland that theoretically in part are, are using our, our parks. So I think that's more equitable than, than other ways of doing it. And then I just had some other suggestions as well to, there's for your consumption.
I'd like to make a comment, Mayor, I, I really appreciate all the work you've done to analyze this and your recommendations. Just a quick question, so American Fork City has a park tax, they call it. Do you know some of the other cities, which is a RAP tax, basically? Can you tell me some of the other cities in the location?
You know, I should have looked at, I did know that at one point in time, Lehigh, it went on the ballot in Lehigh, I can't remember if it passed or not. I believe Cedar Hills may have one, Alpine does not. So there are maybe, I'm guessing a quarter to a third of the cities in the county use it.
And, and the RAP tax, basically a municipality can add a quarter cent to the sales tax.
Point one.
Point one, okay.
Point one, and we have to go to the county for permission to do that. Because if the county implements their own RAP tax, we can't. So we have to go to the county and the county has to say, okay, I'm, I'm not implementing a RAP tax. So you can, so there, we have to vote on it, then we have to take that to the county and they have to approve it. And then it goes on the ballot.
So the people approve it in the end?
People in the end approve it, and so I think that is a, is a good thing and I, you know, we can talk about the pros and cons and then the, the people can decide. Though like I said, I, I think that's a, a, a more fair way to distribute the costs of the parks than, than other ways that we have.
And, and your feeling is, is a RAP tax would generate a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year?
A hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand a year, I'd have to, a couple of years ago, I asked Gary and it was just over a hundred, I, I don't know where we're at now. Tyler, I don't know if you know what our annual sales tax revenue is, but it would just be another, we get one percent, we would just add a tenth of a percent on top of that, so.
Yeah, he just did a big analysis, it was in the emails yesterday, right?
Okay, so when, when, when you have a turn to talk, you can bring that up. Anyway, with that, I'll turn the time over to Nathan and then he will orchestrate the rest of the meeting. And then we'll all get to ask questions.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So. Where am I pointing? At you? Okay. Okay, so tonight, we have two purposes and a goal, well, kind of same thing, what we're trying to accomplish. I remember years ago, we were living in Arizona and my wife, we were going to some friend's house, my wife decided to make a multi-layer Jell-O. I told her never again, after it took her all day, if you guys remember that. Layer upon layer, do you make those?
My wife has made them before, but.
Yes.
Last time it was never again after that.
Yeah, parks, the issue that we're going to talk about is kind of like that. Lots of different layers, lots of different issues. We have expectations versus reality, we have natural areas versus grass areas, we have funding, we have water, we have maintenance, all kinds of different issues. So tonight, we're going to primarily focus on maintenance. Our goal is to have the council have a good, solid understanding of how our budget works, how our maintenance works, how we prioritize areas and what we do. So with that in mind, for our staff, what we're requesting of the council is to have you define what your expectations are as far as maintenance goes for parks and open space. And we're going to define those in a minute, so we're all on the same page, because they can mean different things to different people. Okay, so here's the agenda, and I forgot to update this, so my apologies, but it'll give a good reminder. We're going to go over a brief overview of open space subdivisions, because that's kind of the crux of the issue. That'll be me. And we did reach out to some other cities, Erin will discuss the results of that. We're going to define what parks and open space means for the purposes of this discussion. Mayor talked about survey results. We'll talk about park maintenance, open space maintenance, trail maintenance, some gaps we see and council expectations. If we have time, we can talk about our encroachment issues and possible areas to sell. In the Dropbox, there is a, there is a electronic packet called Packet. You see a table of contact, contents in there, has a number of things. It has a open space district history memo that was created in 2012, when you have insomnia tonight after this meeting. You can start reading that in the minutes. The Trail Master Plan, which is a key part of this, general plan, parks and recreation element. That's a key, especially as we start talking about parks and neighborhoods. Neighborhood and mini parks and community parks slash athletic complexes. Has the mayor's information PowerPoint that he went over this evening. We have a number of maps that we're going to get to that you can read there and the PowerPoint from tonight. Okay, Erin?
This is me. So we sent an email to cities around the state asking a number of questions related to open space and maintenance, just to get a feel for, and trail corridor maintenance specifically, to get a feel for how other cities handled it. So we got eleven responses. So I'm just going to kind of summarize some of the things that we found from that. The first thing is actually, cities are doing similar things to us, about one to two times a year, they're going through and maintaining these areas, the trail corridors and the natural vegetation, open space areas. Very few cities have any easier escaping along their trail corridors. Some have done it, but that most have been prohibited because of costs and other priorities are higher type of a thing. When we asked them, okay, so do you actually have a schedule for your trail maintenance or are you just doing it as needed, it was about half and half. But those who do say they have a schedule say that they're not always able to stick to it, just because other priorities tend to bump up above that, other needs and things.
Erin, I don't mean to, you have eleven responses, could you maybe share the cities you got responses back from?
Yes.
Just briefly.
Give me one second and I'll pull that up. So, and then in terms of who, you know, we asked actually, has anybody sold their open space properties? Only a couple ever have and they were kind of strange circumstances, so it's atypical, at least from these cities. And, but everybody said, the ones who did sell it and everybody else actually encouraged us said, use an appraiser, just get an outside party every single time you sell. To give you a, to, to determine the price on that. And if you'll give me just a second, I will pull up the cities who responded to me.
Can I ask a quick question, Erin, while you're doing that? So are these other cities' open space set up like ours, where we have these open space neighborhoods with parks and trails?
No, they were, you know, so I just asked, we just, we have a, like a listserv for, of all other city managers in the state, so. No, a lot of them are unique, like, so, okay, Clearfield, Orem, Clinton, Linden, Kayville, Beaver, West Jordan, Murray, Sandy, Cottonwood Heights and Park City. So the, each community seemed to have a different philosophy on open space. Cottonwood Heights, for example, had very little open space, you know, they're a very, what's the word? Yeah, they're, they're a very urban community, right? Whereas Park City has a ton of natural open space and, I mean, we're talking like very natural, like where the cougar is going to run after you type of open space. So, because they've got some very rural areas in their city, very open. So every community is different, I, to my, I have not come across another city that's exactly like our Scott, that Councilmember Smith that is, has these open space type neighborhoods. So we, we kind of just generalized the question and said, natural vegetation that is near homes type of a thing is kind of how I defined open space for this survey. Trail corridors, I'd say that's pretty universal amongst cities.
But we're fairly unique with this open space neighborhood concept.
Yes, but to my knowledge, we are very unique there.
Now, Erin, just when you're asking open space, you're asking about city-owned open space.
Correct.
So all these responses are coming back, this is city-owned open space and how they're maintaining it?
Correct.
Any of these responses, did you ask them, is it the city that is paying to maintain it or do they also have an open space fee where just certain neighborhoods maintain their own open space?
One city mentioned that they have one neighborhood that has an open space district. I think it was Orem. But the rest is, seem to be, you know, they, they pull it out of their general fund or somewhere else, but one city had one neighborhood that did have a specific assessment, no, I lied, West Jordan has a special assessment area.
Erin, can I add something real quick? Councilman Smith, I, I worked in the private industry for twenty years doing engineering for residential and commercial developments and I can tell you, a lot of the cities in Utah County have a component in their, in their ordinances that allows for bonus density. Utah County have a component in their, in their ordinances that allows for bonus density. So, they park, you know, park space, trail space, that can be dedicated, and you get bonus density. So, they are similar to Highland City, it's just not an exact, as our open space ordinance was, but I can tell you that a lot of the cities that I worked in, doing private development and residential and commercial, had a component where you could dedicate property and get bonus densities. So, they are, they're out there, how much it's utilized, I don't know.
Okay. And then I think this is you, Nathan?
So, for the purposes of tonight's discussion, park means, this is Beacon Hills, park means green grass, open space is going to mean anything but green grass. Some call it weeds, some call it scrub oaks, some call it natural vegetation, but for tonight, we're going to call that open space. Yes, sir?
Would you allow us to find any green grass along trails a little bit?
We have very little green grass along trails.
Would you agree to combine the trail corridors a little bit?
Yes.
Just, what Brian Braithwaite was talking about, is there's some grass, when we walk along some trails, which I have, there's some grass, but that's underneath the maintenance agreement, that residents have entered into the city, and they're maintaining it.
We didn't get that specific.
But, but I mean, that's what, that's why it's not talked about, it's really only parks or open space.
Right. So, in nineteen ninety-nine, the city council passed the, the open space ordinance, the goal was to obtain parks, trails, and preserve open space. When I say preserve open space, in this particular instance, it's like natural washes, hillsides, that kind of area, environmentally sensitive lands, as part of development. If you remember, real estate prices, it started to climb, and it'd be impossible to, for the city to afford purchasing all this property for parks. There, you know, Utah is a desert, we've been in a drought for, I think the last article I saw was eight years running, they were concerned about water consumption, and being able to water and keep up with demands over time, we're seeing that played out today, with our rates being, with our usage being at all-time highs today, surpassing what we were planning at build-out. There was a lack of maintenance of large lots, and with people being able to maintain the back spaces of those lots, there was a lot of talk of disconnection from Highland City to other cities that would grant higher density, and so they were trying to figure out a way to provide a financially viable alternative to R-140, without going to medium to high-density development in Highland. So they came up with this open space subdivision concept that granted additional density for dedication of parkland, dedication of trails, dedication of land and things like that. We have another, we have everything from Dry Creek Hollow, that's a natural area, to Mitchell Hollow Park, to Beacon Hills Park, and everywhere in between. One of the things that came out of that was, is long-term maintenance, and there was a concern, working in another jurisdiction, the concern, this is as early as ten years ago, was, can an HOA long-term maintain these areas as, long-term maintain these areas at an appropriate standard? And so, the council decided to do the open space special service district.
Now, Nathan, at this time, did the developer, did the city go and require the developers to do this, or was this an opt-in by the developer? So the developer says, I'm going to opt into open space, I'm going to opt in to this bonus density?
It was an opt-in, this was an option.
Because that's important, because the ground that's in open space was not exacted, I mean, we didn't go and say, we're requiring you to give it, the developer came and says, I would like to opt into this, because they could have done R-140, I mean, that, that was still available, so they could have done an R-140 lot, or they could have opted into open space, they came and opted to go to open space, and they put their property into an open space.
Yeah, two different decisions, right? You could do, you could choose to do the open space subdivision, and you could either form an HOA and maintain it that way, or you could join the open space special service district.
Yeah, just, as you went and talked to the cities, we'd heard, I'd heard that Kay'sville was selling some property, so I got ahold of Kay'sville to ask their process, this was almost a year ago, and asked what their process was going to be, it was interesting, they were actually taking over an HOA, they had an HOA in their city that was not being maintained, and the HOA had come to them to ask if the city would take over that property, so it was kind of this HOA versus city, which is the better option.
I think you, I think you have those issues in, in certain cities, but I think also Highland's unique, and I think Scott's neighborhood is one, you have Highland, now, what's it called?
Hidden Oaks.
Hidden, Hidden Oaks, no, I was talking about one up here.
Bow River?
No, Bow River's another one, but off of six thousand, it's on the right.
Just a small cul-de-sac.
Couple small cul-de-sacs.
Oh, you're talking about there by the church, that little area there?
Yes.
Av, Avonmore, Avonmore.
No, not Avonmore, Quail Hollow, thank you. I mean, we get requests from those, hey, can you take care of our private streets, right? We get those all, all the time, so, but I think Highland's unique, in that, if you remember Sky Estates, that's all HOA maintained, right? One of the, one of the things, one of the things is, if your amenities are good enough, they'll maintain it, because they're invested in it.
Wait, so Nathan, I just want to go back, what Todd was saying, it's not unique, though, about what Highland did, where we did a bonus thing, so other cities have done that.
This is very-
They've put in parks and trails in those neighborhoods also, in exchange?
Yeah.
But they just didn't charge the twenty-dollar fee to those residents?
It's a very common thing, very common.
Highland's the only one that decided to charge a twenty-dollar fee?
Not necessarily.
No.
Well, didn't Erin just say the only city that charges a fee for open space is West Jordan, that one special district?
I mean, that's of eleven cities who responded, there's like two hundred in the state, so, you know, I think that, that provides a snapshot, but I wouldn't say it's representative of everywhere.
You have to do more digging.
Yeah, I'd just like to see if there's anyone else that is charging a fee.
And we can ask, we didn't ask that specifically, but we can ask that, we can say, you know, how many of you have special service districts to maintain parks and open space and charge a fee for that?
So Lehigh does what Todd talked about, now, what, the way they do it is, they have a trail master plan for this, their city, and they have park master plans, not, the safer neighborhood parks, for city parks, and so, if a developer is developing in an area where a, the trail goes through there, in exchange for helping build that trail, they'll reduce the density requirements for it, and they use it all the time to finish out their trail master plan.
And they have, yeah, Lehigh has a matrix, where if you do certain things, it just keeps getting more and more and more, so you can do a number of things and get bonus densities, so.
So maybe to help with, so a developer to come, and let's assume they have forty acres, they could maybe go, hey, I, I could do, and we'll just use it easy, they're going to do half acre, so they could get eighty lots, but if they did a bonus density, they might be able to get a hundred and twenty lots, because that bonus, but they have to go build a park, and I think the question you had is that, is that park, once they build it, is it maintained by the city, or is it maintained by those residents? And I think it depends if it's an HOA. The other question, I think it has to be importantly asked, is the parks were developed different than those. When they go put the parks in, they didn't put the houses all the way around to make sure they were touching, you know, some of our subdivisions, and this was our problem with open space. The first open space, every home had to touch some form of open space, then it evolved, where in some of the areas, then they, we don't have every home touching open space, you know, so if you look at the, the originals, every home had to touch some form of open space, where in this, these, these other cities, they, they don't have every home touching open space, and they didn't, you know, it's, it's a little different, and so, that's what I'm saying, was we, you know, Scott, that's our problem, is we're unique, because the way we brought about the open, you know, the, it could have been, it was either going to be city ran, is that right? When you're going by your history, it could have been city ran, or it could have been a, like a conservation easement, or conservation service district, I think they were talking about doing a conservation, you know, service district.
Open space special service district.
District, or a city.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
But, but Kurt, one of the issues, I think, with the problems we've had in open space, is that very concept, where all the homes had to touch some open space, so, you know, and I hate saying this again, but I like the open space concept, but the design was a big problem, and it was probably, came from that. So we, we created a bunch of orphaned properties and things, and it's a problem.
No, that, that's where it's unique, is to require that every parcel touch open space.
Yeah, and morphed over time, Apple Blossom is your perfect example of, every lot has to touch one, or, what's the other one, Windsor down there, right? Windsor?
Windsor Meadows.
Windsor Meadows. Windsor Meadows, I think Wimbledon was-
Might be, yeah.
Yeah, Island Hills, it all touches.
So, I think, yeah, Viewpoint is one as well, that has to touch.
So, yeah, Viewpoint's kind of, little odd dog, but anyways, par, in the concept, yes?
Par of what?
Odd dog. Parks were primarily to function as local neighborhood parks, and the reason that's interesting is, in some of the discussions the council has had, the, but what, in the general plan, when it, when it discussed how much acreage and things they were going to provide, they took out specifically neighborhood and mini-parks, which was interesting. But they're primarily to function as those, they had opportunities with Beacon Hills, with Canterbury's, with Mitchell Hollow, and some others, to provide larger ones. The majority, they recognized that the majority of use would come within the development, a lot of cities, when they do these type of things, they, if it's HOA maintained, for example, a lot of people have concerns about, hey, this is HOA maintained, and, you know, we don't want public on it, and et cetera, et cetera. If you had trails that were, in our vocabulary, were citywide trails, they would put an easement over it, to allow the public across that one particular trail, or something like that. Native areas were encouraged to reduce water and maintenance costs. Now, one, I'm, I'm going to talk about two different things here, there is the expectation in Utah, and the reality. The expectation, you know, it's funny, if you, for those that have visited or lived in Arizona, the expectation, you go down there, the expectation is, rocks in your front yard, little small patch of grass in your backyard, and everybody's fine and happy. Here in Utah, it's not that. Here in Utah, everybody's expected to have nice green lawns, you know, and dealing with this fungicide that, and dealt with, you know, well, no, we, we got to have deep green lawns, you know, we can't have a brown patch anywhere, you know, heaven forbid. And while the expectation was for natural vegetation, or that's what they wanted, the reality is, when you, somebody walk into a sales office, you saw a nice green pitcher, and that became your expectation of what was behind your house. And then the other, then the other, the other side of it is, when you take a piece of farmland that's been disturbed forever, and you're growing tomatoes, or, shall we say, special ingredients, from the builers, no, I'm just kidding, special ingredients and other crops, crops, and you go in there and you try to, and you grade a subdivision, and you put your roads in, you put your sewer in, and you grade the lots, especially when you're doing smaller lots, and then you go back and you try to re-vegetate with something that hasn't been there in years, it becomes problematic. Takes a long time to re-vegetate stuff, people grow impatient, and then you're mowing, and it's really hard. The other, that's different than when you go up Twin Bridges, Beacon Hills area, and you say, don't touch the scrub oak, don't touch this hillside, don't touch this, and you can say, this is preserved, don't touch it. Those are two different things, and it's really hard to create an area that's natural, and keep it natural, and keep it like the desert, that used to be farmland. And people just, and it's hard to be patient, to do that, and it's hard to achieve that. And it really created some issues, and so you kind of have this perfect storm going on for us, and then you have, then you have a number of different issues. So, I got a map here that I'm going to show you in a minute, but a lot of people say, well, was your, is your open space subdivision program successful? Yes or no? If you look at it from providing active areas for residents, well, this is what we would have if we didn't do something like that. You have Merlin Larson Heritage, Highland Glen, and this, easier to show you on a map, that's what we would have in our community, and as the mayor went over, one of the things people like about our community is, is those, is those areas. So, it did achieve one of its primary goals, you wouldn't have Beacon Hills, you wouldn't have Mitchell Hollow, one could argue that Mountain Ridge is quasi, but it really didn't do the same thing, it's kind of, it's, it's a different, but you did trade some density for that. So, from that perspective, has it achieved that? You know, you, you guys can draw your own conclusion on that, for yourself. So, here's, here's a list of some of the areas that it did provide, and that some of the residents have enjoyed. The, the biggest ones you point out, at least from my perspective, are the bigger areas, you know, the Mitchell Hollow Parks, the Beacon Hills, those bigger ones that serve a larger area, and I think some of the smaller ones are, are done well, too. We do have, we've, and had some areas that didn't turn out so well, and created some issues, issues for us.
I don't see Beacon Hills listed here, I'm not, oh, is it Twin Bridges, is that where?
No, I just missed it.
Okay.
On this one.
Yeah, because that's one of the biggest open space parks, yeah.
Just typing too fast, and...
That's okay, I just didn't see it there.
Yeah, just on purpose. So, Erin?
I will be brief, because Mayor kind of went over, went over some of this already, but, so, I, I wanted to highlight a few questions in relation to parks and open space that we last, asked on our last survey, so, this, this shows what percent of respondents feel like we are doing a good or excellent job in a few categories, so I narrowed it down to natural, open space, that should say maintenance, natural, open space maintenance, park quality and trail quality. So, kind of typical of what the mayor was saying, we had been going up a little bit in every category, and then in twenty nineteen, we dropped in almost every category, and you see that here. So in twenty twenty, which is the first year we asked about natural, open space maintenance, fifty-three percent of people said we were doing a good or excellent job there. Park quality, we were at eighty, seventy-eight percent, so nearly eighty percent, and then again, nearly seventy percent of people are saying we're doing a good or excellent job with trail, trails. Another question was about funding increase, and Mayor went over this a little bit, so I'm not going to spend too much time here, but again, it will be a heavy lift, when, you know, if the council chooses to pursue something like that. So, I just highlighted a few numbers of, when we have pursued increases to either part, or fees or taxes for different things, so, the year we went for our road fee, sixty-seven percent of people said that they would likely, or very likely, support an increase there. The year we went for public safety, so it was a fifty-one percent for fire, and fifty percent for police, were likely, or very likely. This last year, when we asked about open space, thirty-six percent of people said that- said that they would be likely or very likely to support any increase there. Parks and trails, I didn't highlight those numbers, but they're about 46, 47%. So again, it's similar to what the mayor showed. If we do choose to pursue it, we've got some work to do. Back to you, sir.
So you said 36% would not, would support an increase.
Said they were likely or very likely to support an increase.
And that is interesting. There was a vote in 2005 in Highland specifically about open space, remove the open space fee, you know, the $20.
Oh.
And it was turned down two to one. And so it's almost right there, that 33% supportive. I just find it interesting that here's our survey, you know, here in 2019, it's still almost mirroring what happened when the initiative three in 2005 went out to vote.
That's interesting, I hadn't heard about that.
So Aaron, remind me how we defined open space in the survey.
For this particular question, we said natural vegetation, open space.
So it could have been anything in open space neighborhoods, it could have been anywhere in the city, right?
Yeah, so as long as it was natural vegetation, yep.
I mean, there's a lot of natural vegetation in Highland Glen Park and.
That's true. Maybe we should have somehow excluded that.
And there's your conservation areas, which are natural vegetation throughout. So, you know, again, it's kind of one of those hard things in a survey to define, yeah.
You know, and we were talking about this today as a staff that, you know, we do have a survey coming up, you know, beginning of 2021 that I think will probably heavily be about open space, parks. So we should, we should think about that more and better, define that, Scott. I understand what you're saying, I agree. All right, no question, no more questions about that. I'll let Nathan continue or Todd?
So I'm going to turn over to Todd, but I'll, I'll just read, I forgot to mention one thing. When we talked about, you know, back when they did open space subdivisions and they were facing pressure from people who wanted disconnect and they're trying to figure out a alternative to keep them in the city, wherever Dry Creek or Northwest area or whatever. We kind of dealt with that a little bit, a little bit different scenario. But that's what our PD district does, too. And we dealt with that with the Sky Estates a little bit. And we dealt with that with the state property also. So kind of familiar circumstances, not exactly the same, but very familiar. But just to draw some parallels.
So Nathan, I actually, just, I just think it's interesting. So here's initiative number three from November 2005. This is what it said. Shall an ordinance be enacted that all city-owned open space be maintained at a certain minimum standard equivalent to the city's Heritage Park and require that the city or other owners of open space be responsible for the cost of maintaining the open space? Initiative three on the open space issue, 984, 1804 against. I'm just, just saying, it's just good information.
Mayor, council, I'm going to take a few minutes from here on out and just explain a little bit about our parks maintenance program, our staff, different things associated with that. This map basically shows all of our parcels that we currently own, whether they're manicured or open. Some of these areas in purple, this map is in your packet if you want to look at it more closely. But there's 116 parcels that we own in Highland City, between parks, trails, all of those things. What I wanted to point out is the last census that took place in 2010, our population was 15,523. Current, currently, our population is 20,079. That is a 29% increase in 10 years. Back then, so we as staff looked at when we acquired these parcels from development because most of all the properties that we have acquired over the last 10 years have come by way of development and the open space ordinance. Back in 2010, we had 135 acres of manicured lawn grass that we mowed. Today, we have 163 acres, which is just under a 20% increase in the last 10 years. I looked at our, our full-time employees in engineering and public works. In 2010, we had 17. Today, we have 15. And two of those have been added in the last year. And Mike, who hopefully you've all met, Mike Burns, has been added to our engineering department to help with GIS and engineering projects. And we also added a full-time employee in the PI department. So we are actually two less full-time employees than we were 10 years ago. And we've grown in both of those categories, in, in open space to maintain and population, as you can see. So I just wanted, before we get going, I just wanted to show those numbers to give us a little bit of context of why we're in the bind that we are. So we, Josh and I sat down and looked at staff, the staffing last year versus this year. We had a couple of different years in maintenance and things that we were able to get to. This was our staff in 2019. We had a really hard time fully staffing our, our parks and open space staff. That was due to wages that we couldn't compete with. Also, what I wanted to show here is that, you know, we rely heavily on part-time employees that come to us usually June, late May, early June, and then they usually leave us mid-August. So we only have three full-time employees in our parks department in the city of Highland. That means that we really, really have a hard time getting by from April to May and from August to November in keeping up with mowing and maintenance. Some of the other things get dropped due to this issue because we have, we're usually fully staffed on a good year between June 1st and August 15th. And so that's usually when we do our best of keeping up with the parks and the open space. But where we really struggle is the, up before April to May and August to November. We also have a real hard time with, if we don't get fully staffed for the year, usually where we have to pull employees is from our native mow crews. Our native mow crews are some of the first that get pulled because we get so many complaints when grass starts getting too long. And so that's the number one thing that we see. When, when we get behind in mowing the cemetery, the parks, those are when the real complaints come. And so we have to pull crews from our native crews and put them on mowing the manicured grass areas. And that's where we get a lot of our complaints with the native is because we are just understaffed. And when, when our temps leave, that's when we really struggle is in the early spring and, and late fall. So this was our, I wanted to show this graphic, this was 2019. We had a very hard time getting fully staffed. The white squares are our full-time guys. Everything else in, in yellow was part-time that we pulled in. These are our mowing crews, our native mowing crews. We have, we tried to have someone over fertilizing, pruning, those types of things. And then obviously our sprinkler guy, Chris, who does one heck of a job running the system as a whole on his own, when in a lot of cases, he does not have seasonals with him. So this is kind of the, the staffing for 2019. Now, we were very fortunate this year, 2020, you can see, we added several positions. This year, we were actually able to run three mowing crews. We've actually highlighted in red a few of the part-time guys that we've been able to bring back for a couple of years that have knowledge of what they're doing. It was, it was very good to have them come back, but it cost us a little bit more money to get them, a little higher wages to get them to come back. But you can see, we're still running on three full-time guys. But this was 2020. We were able to get started a little sooner. We were, we were more fully staffed in June due to COVID. We had a lot of young, young workers that basically were off from school because of COVID and they wanted to work. And so we were able to staff, staff our guys a little bit earlier. We were also able to schedule much better. And we'll get into schedule in just a minute. Sprinkler, screens, we were able to clean those much better this year and our sprinkler systems worked better. All around, just better service from 2019. Now, if you remember correctly, in our budget meetings, we showed that we were over budget in temporary employees. This is the reason. We were, for the first time in a long time, fully staffed to the current level of service. But anyway, this is what, what our parks and rec department look this year for staffing. So park maintenance, this is hard to see, but you have this graphic in your drop box. Basically, as I showed earlier, since 2010, we have actually decreased in, in staff size. But we only mow Monday through Thursday. So what we have shown here, this is the map of what we mow every day of the week. Green is Monday, yellow is Tuesday, red is Wednesday and blue is Thursday. Now, there are weeks that we get ahead, we get behind due to weather, different circumstances. But last year, we had one heck of a time meeting up with this. In fact, there were times where there were a few parks that got, would you say, Shin High grass? It was very hard to keep up. And you can see, if we have minimal staff and we keep adding more and more green space that we're mowing, something's got to give. We either need to add a bigger department, more staff to our department, or we need to add another day of mowing. There's just so many hours in the day that we can do this. But this is our current pattern. You can see that I put the acreages there on the side that you can see what we mow, how many acres of property each day. But this is our current maintenance schedule.
Since you brought up hours, so we're, as a city, we're open Monday through Thursday.
Correct.
You're doing four 10-hour shifts. Can you help me, does that benefit you where the, where those employees like to work just four hour, you know, the four days? Because I, when I've talked to some of them, they enjoy that because they have their Friday, Saturday, Sunday off. Is that a benefit that's different than other cities? Or do other cities kind of run this? And do we get, you think it helps us because we're not always resetting back up? I mean, some of the conversations are if they do four 10s, they're able to stay out versus going back to the, you know, if you had that extra day, it takes an extra day to set up.
It, it does. There are definitely time wasted in the morning and afternoons going to and from. I think it's much better for our mowing crews to do the four 10s. We, we've got to stick to 40 hours for our temps and our full-time guys. But I feel like it's more efficient to do the four days versus five because of that extra time that you're already out there and you're going. Otherwise, we're splitting the city into five and you've just got more time wasted driving to and from locations where if you're there and you just keep going, you've got that extra two hours each day. So that's how we feel as staff and feel like the four 10s is working. It's just a matter of having the guys to get through all of the square footage that we have. Great question, Kurt. Anything else, any other questions so far? So this is, this is the manicured areas. The next one, and keep in mind, it's impossible without me showing four or five maps to get detailed. So you'll have to pull up your, your packet. But this is all of the un-manicured. This means open space that's natural. This means drainage areas that we don't touch. But what we've done here is this is, this is what we did this year, 2020. We were able to mow, and if you look at the colors up there, most of the areas got two or three mowings this year of natural vegetation. There were a few that got one, but they were very few. And then we also have up there in red, these are areas that we just don't touch because they're native areas, drainage areas that we don't mow. They're highly vegetated with scrub oak, different things like that and have drainage channels through them. So this is our open space maintenance for natural vegetation. Any questions on this one?
Yes, so on the red ones where you don't do anything, is that right?
Yes.
Do we ever have to go in and like clean out brush? Or like a creek bed gets jammed with fall and stuff?
Yeah, so we, we take care of drainage issues as they come up. But there, yeah, like down in Highland Glen Park, we go in and remove dead fall and things like that and clean them up. Some of the more natural areas, like up in the Northwest, we don't get down in there much. It's hard to get down there with any type of equipment. But we, we do monitor the drainage channels where they come, you know, under the roads through the culverts and make sure, you know, the last couple of years that I have been here at the city, there's been two or three times that we would have to go out with equipment and clean out a drainage channel, so.
Do we do that proactively or, like I know with Bow River, when it, when it jams up, then we do it?
I wish we could do that proactively, mayor, but we do not. It is 100% reactive.
Okay, and, and we don't do anything to mitigate fire risk proactively, too?
No.
Like clean out dead wood or anything like that? So that's stuff we could be doing and might be smart to do if we had the resources to do that.
Correct. We just get pulled, you know, on a daily basis, we may have a plan to do something, but we immediately get pulled to a different location because of emergencies.
Yes.
That is 100% how our sprinkler technician runs. He is, I wish he had more time and more help because he is 100% reactive. And I wish there's a lot we could do to be very proactive and, and make things look better, get spray coverage better. But he is chasing leaks, he's chasing breaks, broken heads all day long, so.
Todd, a question, when we put down biannually, are we saying, okay, we're going to hit, you know, traditionally, what we did this year is we're hitting the first of June and like the first of August? Or are they all coming in in August and September? What do you, what did you guys experience?
We, we, now Josh, you can jump in, but you can see the very large area that's down Dry Creek Lake. Usually, we, we send Doug, it's Doug that's on the big tractor, right? So Doug is on that and he'll go down in there and he'll work, but we have a schedule for everything else. He'll go down in there and do some work and then he'll be pulled in different places. But it's a constant. He's just trying to get through the city and then he'll turn around and do the same thing. He gets pulled a lot to mow when we don't, you know, we're missing guys because we don't have any redundancy. If somebody's gone, we need to pull from somewhere else to keep the mowing. We stay on a very strict schedule with the mowing on the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday schedule. But where we get pulled, Councilman Ossler is, is on the native mowing. But it's not, it's, it's a constant. He is out mowing and he makes it through the city and then he turns around and he does it again. And there's so much of it, I mean, we're talking hundreds of acres of this, this native vegetation that by the time he makes it through, it's, it's time to start again. But there are certain places you'll notice down, for example, like Windsor, we do that quite a bit because that, that gets seen a lot coming into the city. And so we try to cut that down a little bit more and stay ahead of that one and, and other places. But to answer your question, we don't have a specific schedule. He is just going constantly. And as much as he can get done without being pulled to other things is what he gets done. We only have one, one native tractor mower. We would like, we've talked about getting some small brush cutters, but just, just as far as equipment, and we'll get into equipment in just a minute.
We probably don't know right off the top of our head how many acres there are in the city.
Yeah.
But it, it looks like you're either manicuring or taking care of the open space, natural vegetation. A significant portion of the city.
Right, well, the, the total acreage that we, that I currently have in my GIS is 427.28 acres. That is the total of what I'm showing up there as far as ownership. 163.7 acres is what we mow weekly.
Which is manicured.
Manicured, correct. So 163 acres, 164 acres is what we mow weekly. And, and what we cut, oh, I got to do some math in my head here, 346 acres minus 164.
Well, on that slide, it says we cut 183.
100 and, well, 163. 163, yeah. Okay, can you, you can read that better than I can, mayor. Tell, tell us what the cut.
I'm wearing my medium glasses, not my long glasses, so.
From our spreadsheet, basically. From our spreadsheet, basically, no maintenance at all. What you see in red is eighty-one acres. And then we mow a hundred and sixty-three acres and whatever is left is either cut biannually, annually, or if we get to it triannually. So as much as we can cut. So that is the native. Any other questions with native as we move on?
Okay, hold, sorry.
Sure.
Just cause it's data. The city owns four hundred and twenty-seven point two eight acres, correct?
Correct.
We are mowing weekly a hundred and sixty-three point seven.
Correct.
That's manicured. And that, that's the manicured. And then what, is the open space is a hundred and eighty-two point six or is that?
No, so here.
Is that the minus? You gotta take that.
So if you take, if you take the one sixty-three point seven and the eighty point nine nine here, I'll do it right here.
Okay.
Come on. I'm working off my machine in my office, so it's going slow. So four twenty-seven minus one sixty-four minus eighty-one, roughly a hundred and eighty-two. So it is correct on there. A hundred and eighty-two is, is cut as much as we possibly can get to.
More, that's more native.
Yep. And, and, and there were a lot of complaints last year about us not getting to it and it was accurate. We had a hundred and eighty-two acres that we were trying to get to and we had a lot of residents that came in in two thousand nineteen and said, you didn't make it to this, you didn't make it to that. We were doing our best with the staff that we had. Um, but yeah, this year, we've done a much better job at getting to a lot of the open space, uh, areas, so. Um, any other questions there?
I'd just like to make a quick comment. It seems to me from this presentation and looking at the general overview, if you subtract all the roads out of the city, which you maintain, a lot of them, but just park space and things, you're maintaining a large chunk of the city with a, a few people on the staff. And I think people don't realize that. And so this has been very helpful.
Well, and, and it's three. We have three full-time employees and so you, you think about what a, a, a large endeavor this is. Now, obviously, we have temps, but it's hard to get them for months, certain months of the year where we need to be maintaining it, so. Um, moving on, um, we're, we're gonna get into trail maintenance now. Um, trail maintenance, we have, uh, had limited funds over the last, well, forever, uh, to do trail maintenance. This year, we increased our trails budget by a hundred thousand dollars and we spent every dime of it this year. Um, we started, uh, last fall and this past spring doing a trail inventory. We're basically starting a process similar to what we have done with the roads. Uh, we, we had Tara, our previous, uh, planner, she drove every trail in Highland and videoed every trail. Uh, she came in and then started putting together segments and, and identifying which ones were good, which ones were bad, and spent a lot of time doing that, so we put together a trail inventory. We also have been putting out the trail data collectors on all of the trails in Highland. We're about halfway through, um, with getting data, which that's what the ADT stands for, uh, average daily traffic on the trail. Um, we also, by, by doing the inventory, we're putting a PCI pavement condition index to every section of trail. And then we will go through and determine what do we need to do with those trails to get them back up to a good PCI value and, and estimate the cost to do that, that, uh, type of work, whether it's just a surface treatment, crack seal, or completely reconstructing the trail. But if you look, the, uh, the graphic there on the side that says priority, basically what we'll do is we'll take those three things, just like we did with the roads, we'll put them into a spreadsheet that we have and it will spit out and say, here's your priority. Start with this trail and go all the way through and we'll create a trail maintenance plan similar to what we have with the roads. Uh, until we have costs in there and then until we have usage and have this list, I don't know what that looks like. Is it making it through every trail and every, you know, in a five-year period, in a four-year period? I don't know what that is. But we basically will put that hundred thousand dollars we currently get from the county into those trails and, and see what we can do. We were able to, and, and I just put a few samples of our spreadsheets in here. Uh, what we have left to do, there on the side, finish the trail usage counts, finalize the PCI values for all the trail sections, um, add the suggested treatments, and then add the cost estimates for each treatment. Um, but we're hoping to have that ready by January, February, uh, of this next year so that we're ready as council, to, to present it to the council and have you approve a maintenance plan moving forward. Um, what we did this year, this is all of our trails, um, and once again, I apologize, you throw up a graphic and it's the whole city, but, um, basically what you see, and for those of you in the audience, I apologize, uh, what's in blue up there is what we did surface treatment this year. Surface treatment is fairly inexpensive and our crack seals are, a lot of our trails were actually in good condition. Um, what we did is once Tara had the, uh, the, the inventory done, I asked her to give me a list of all the trails that were in good condition that just, just required a minor surface, uh, crack seal and a surface treatment. What you see there in blue, we did this year with the hundred and thirty thousand dollars in the budget. Um, it, it covered almost eighty percent of our trails in Highland.
How many miles would you say that? Do you have any idea?
I knew you were gonna ask me that. Um, Scott, can I get back to you on that?
I'm just curious. That's not critical.
I have it, but I can't, I don't have it in front of me.
No, Todd, some of these trails that we slurried and patched, I mean, I run quite a bit on the trail behind Lone Peak going up to the mouth of American Ford Canyon, and that was slurried and patched, most of it. There's a section by the Cedar Hills Golf Course that wasn't done, but, um, I, I've heard from residents in the city that were some trails that were slurried and patched that probably should have been rebuilt.
You know, Scott, I walked out there and I found one or two that we missed. I'll, I'll be honest, I'll take credit that we, um, there's a couple of places where we should have probably done some patching ahead of time. Uh, that's us trying to spend trail money and doing our best as far as looking at the inventory. Uh, the same thing happened with our roads. If you remember, uh, our roads plan that came back had several treatments that were inaccurate. One of our worst roads in Highland said just a surface treatment and it needs to be completely rebuilt down to the subgrade. So that's our fault for mislabeling a few of those small sections, but you're, you're correct and we'll, and we'll adjust those as time goes on.
We're gonna address that this spring.
Yes.
Okay.
We, we're gonna do a much better job once we have, uh, the trail maintenance plan. Some of those kinks will be ironed out. This was just a matter of, hey, you need to give me a list of the best trails we have in Highland and we need to spend the money. We have the money. It came from the quarter cent gas tax. Has to be spent on trails and so we did our best this year, so.
Well, I appreciate that, I just wondered.
Yeah. And, and I agree. I, I walked a couple, but for the most part, everything that you see up there that was done is in fairly good condition. Anything else trails? So the last thing I wanted to touch on is just, we've, we've covered maintenance. We've covered parks maintenance, kind of schedules, things like this. These are some of the gaps that we just don't know how to address as staff. Um, truck and trailer replacements. Uh, basically, our parks and open space department gets the hand-me-downs from everybody. Usually, when they get a vehicle, it's a hand-me-down that's been run ragged and then we give it to parks and then they basically just kill it off.
Part of that, part of that's because we don't want teenagers driving brand-new cars.
Correct. And, and we're careful with the ones that are in good condition. But, uh, truck and trailer replacement, equipment replacement, we haven't addressed this forever. Uh, we kinda looked at the last five or six years and we have had very little to no money in replacing equipment. This year, Josh and I sat down and really tried to get aggressive with our, our budget and we actually found some money this year in squeezing some of the other small, other line items and getting him some, uh, replacement money. Um, but it's very little. It's not enough to replace some of the bigger Jacobson mowers, you know, they're eighty to a hundred thousand each. Um, playground equipment replacement is not in our budget. Parks maintenance building, uh, that's a big glaring one out there that we looked at and we've gotta do something, um, just so the, the council, it understands. The two homes are gone. Uh, the Jensen home and the Walkin Horse home where we stored all of our equipment through winters is now gone. We are working on borrowed time at the, uh, the old home on Harvey Boulevard. Uh, there's some outbuildings that we have moved our equipment to. Hopefully, the county's not listening to this. They know, I've told them. But anyway, we don't know what's gonna happen with those buildings. We could be out this winter, I don't know. Until we finish the Canal Boulevard project, we just are uncertain of what they're gonna do with that parcel. Um, we have to do something with the building. Uh, as, as, as council remembers, I did bring a temporary solution to get, uh, protection up at our, our, uh, current site and we're moving in that direction for now, but that's a temporary fix. Um, staffing to provide desire level of service, if the, if the city council determines that we're good, moving forward to continue to provide the level of service that we are, then we're okay. But if, if we feel like we need to listen to residents and do a better job for them, mow more and, and, and clean some of these areas up that we don't get to, um, we, it, it's a deficit somewhere that we've gotta come up with. Um, and then trail corridor treatments, we've talked about, you know, uh, as Aaron said, most cities don't do this. They don't zero-scape their corridors, but, uh, I know that we've, we've had talks of doing that on some of our corridors, removing the natural vegetation and, and doing some zero-scaping, so that's not in the current budget. So these are just some of the gaps that I, I know of, um, that we have not addressed in our budget.
Let me ask a quick question, uh, if you know this off the top of your head. So, I mean, one of the options is to have more temporary workers working under Josh in the summer. How much does it cost us per temporary worker for those three months or how much do we pay them per hour?
Well.
Just a rough idea.
Total, uh, I can't tell you, so right now, I believe we had twenty-four this, twenty-four. We had twenty-four seasonals, uh, this season off and on. We get them, we go, don't get them, they're, they're off and on, uh, with two full-time employees and then twenty-four seasonals. This is the most that we've had in years because we have had one heck of a time hiring. Um, in years past, I think the, the highest we've gotten to is nineteen in looking back. Um, but this year, we had five extra bodies that we haven't in the past. Um, and we actually, to get some of those really good ones back that continue to come back, we had to raise our rate, our wages. And so that's, you know, the city council noticed that with our overspending, but it, it's the situation that we're in. So, um, I couldn't tell you individually, Nathan or Tyler might have a better idea of per employee what that costs, but we spent just on our seasonals this last year in two thousand twenty, um, a hundred and, no, it was two hundred thousand. It was a hundred and thirty-five in parks and open space and sixty-five. That's, isn't that right, Tyler? It was like two hundred and one thousand dollars for all of them, for the year. And that's for twenty-four.
Yeah. Given that there, uh, this was a good year for hiring, next year may be normal or worse or better, we don't know.
We don't know.
So why? Do we figure out, are, are there pieces of work we can outsource? Just outsource and forget about?
You know, we looked at that, Mayor. If you remember, we've looked at that a couple of times since I've been here in the last four years and it just seems like every time we do that, there, there are issues that come up with outsourcing because once you outsource, then, you know, they run over sprinklers, they don't care, they, you know, some of those things, issues. Uh, this last year, we actually outsourced the islands, which worked out really well. We, I, I felt like that worked out well. This year, we didn't have to do that, cause we had more staff. Um, but I felt like the company that we hired to do the islands and pull the weeds and clean them up did a very good job for a, a reasonable cost. I think we could have done it for cheaper, but.
We can't do it because we, we don't have the manpower to do it.
Correct.
So it's, it's not, we just, we can't because we don't have the manpower. So are there other things like that we can?
But the islands look great.
Yeah. And, and Mayor, to, to, on, on years when we can't staff, those are some of the things that we're gonna have to do, but that just means our budgets go up.
Right. So that means the budget that you present needs to be different than it is now.
Well, and, and, and we don't know what that is though. You know, we're, we're doing a final budget in June and we're right in the middle of our really tough season. We don't know what the next season is going to entail. And so, um, I, I think what we need to do is, is season by season, when we can't hire, we may need to come to the council and say, look, we're going to have to outsource X, Y, and Z and we're gonna need a budget adjustment. But, you know, at, at some point, where's the line of, do we just pay a little bit more and, and be more competitive with our seasonal wages and get those guys to come? Or do we outsource? And we've looked at those things and it seems like every time we do, doing it in, in-house is cheaper for the city and for the residents.
So I favor paying the seasonals a little more, you know, and I don't wanna get us sidetracked too much. I mean, one of my concerns is always that increase in government. I mean, here we're talking about parks and that, you have three guys, hey, if we add a fourth, that, you know, it always comes, it's not, I always let go, it's not just the wage, it also comes with the benefit package and then you're carrying it, you know, throughout the whole year because you're not, you know, that, that's some of the concerns is with parks, do you need to have more than three going in the winter? I know if we have snow, you gotta get out there and remove the snow off the trails, but if you don't have a heavy snow, it, it's kind of a, 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 a hard situation.
Right. And, and this leads into kinda what Nathan's gonna go into next, but Kurt, you bring up a good point because I had Josh, Josh has been great to track down a lot of this information for me, um, and I need to give credit to him for, for all of the information we put together, but he also made some phone calls to neighboring communities and asked, how much property do you maintain? How many s, employees do you have? And it was a little eye-opening. Um, and one thing that we noticed is we had, you know, a lot of seasonal employees similar to what they did, but they always had more full-time employees. And I think that what that would do, um, number one, it costs more and so that's an issue for Highland. We'd have to increase budget, but what it did is it really helped with maintaining from April to May and from August to November. When you have more full-time staff, it's much easier to do that. When we rely on so many temps, you got two full-time guys in twenty-four temps, we do a great job from June to August. We don't from April to June and from August to November. We just don't, cause we don't have the staff to do it. We're pulling guys, in fact, the minute that our pressurized irrigation system goes off in, on October fifteenth, we pull both of those guys to parks to help mow because we just can't keep up. And so those are some of the things that we need to talk about, but it comes back to what is the expectation of Highland City residents and what is the city council willing to do for it? And that leads into Nathan, your slide.
So really, we wanted to have a discussion, uh, on what the council's expectations are as far as parks and open space on level of maintenance. I know there's been a level of frustration for a number of, uh, uh, different reasons. Uh, one thing that we, uh, haven't done is put costs to raise level of service. Uh, we, we didn't do that on purpose because we need you to find what your level of service and what your expectation is. Once you do that, we can go in and tell you, okay, if you wanted to increase mowing in, uh, open space areas to every other week, it'll cost you this, we need this more staff, we need this much more equipment, we need this, and come back with some, uh, numbers. So, um, I think, uh, you know, as Todd and I talked about today, I think, you know, he makes a good point, is we really struggle between April and June and we struggle between mid-August and October fifteenth. I'd say end of October, uh, when the, the, uh, the grass finally stops growing, you know, your own lawns, grass finally stops growing and, um, and we're all caught up. So, uh, that's where, uh, that's where the FTEs come in handy, uh, but we also understand what Kurt's saying. saying as far as the cost are higher also. So, you know, if we want to start with open space, going back to what are, you want to go back to that slide, what we currently do and how we operate and let's have a discussion on what would you like to see different?
Here, as I go back, one thing to remember, people don't realize this, but one of our busiest times of the year in parks and open space is actually October fifteenth to November fifteenth. For almost a month, we, we use all of our staff to blow out every sprinkler system in Highland. And it is, it's a very long and tedious process and we, that's why we're pulling guys from public works before the snow flies. We, we have to have their help and to have a few more FTEs would be very, very beneficial. So Nathan, you want me to go to which one?
Other one, open space, how often we mow?
That one?
No, other one.
That one's how, or the open space, that one, okay.
So are you talking about mowing the parks in the open space or the trail corridors?
No, this is the open space, native weeds, whatever you want to call it.
Wherever it is in the park.
Trail corridors, all of the trail corridors.
So let's just get, I think when we say that we're doing it at least triannually, I guess we have to ask, what's, what's the level of the weeds off the side of the areas? You know, because it grows more in May and June than, then it appears we start getting our thorns and weeds in July and we might need to hit it again in August. To me, I think you need to hit it three times. And then we also need a weed treatment. Maybe, maybe we need it first of June and then by the middle, you know, the late, late July to try to keep those sticker thorns. But I know the sticker thorns, I, I have some stuff that I sprayed and ten days later and going, how did it grow so fast? Where'd they come from? You know, because I was trying to be, you know, watch what was going on, but that's kind of just me. I think, you know, most of the open space, I think we need to try to hit it three times. And then I think we need to, you know, kind of maybe spray twice.
So my priority, this is just me personally, is puncture weeds. I believe we have to have an abatement program in place. I don't know what that needs to look like to work, but it absolutely is the thing that we get the most complaints about. So I don't care how it works, I just care that it works and I'm not qualified to have an opinion on what works. So I want staff to tell me, in order to do it, this is what you need to do. And if, and if that means, okay, then we, we don't have the manpower to do it, then let's figure out how to contract for it. Or work with Brian and his committee and do a puncture weed abatement program like Jordan Rower has run for the last couple of years. But for me, if, if next year we haven't started to make a difference on the weed abatement program, then if I was grading parks, I don't care what else they've done, I would give them an F.
And, and mayor, puncture weeds are a difficult thing.
I understand. I've had it on my property. That's why I said, I don't, I know what worked for me, I, but it, it's a lot of work.
Yeah, puncture weeds, it, it's hard because they only grow during the really hot part times and that is usually when the herbicides aren't working. There's a certain window that we can spray the herbicides.
I understand.
Yeah. And so, so really the weed abatement program, program for puncture weeds is pull them. And, and that's really what we probably would need to do.
Tell me what it is, make sure it gets done and then you'll have a less grumpy mayor for at least one more year.
The mayor's proposal is we have a competition amongst all the youth, that they can go out and, and get the puncture weed, we pay them so much per pound or whatever it is, and then the winner gets a grand prize.
I, I, I thought I expressed that idea this year, nothing happened with it, but COVID, it's understandable. So anyway, that's, that's my, my one little hot button for weeding.
I, I agree with what people are saying here, but you're asking about how often, and it's basically, well, any open space trail quarter, right? So when I sat on the open space committee, the biggest complaint I got was the trails aren't maintained to the expectation of the people who were living in open space especially, who are paying the twenty dollar a month fee. So my feeling is, I don't live in open space, I don't have to pay the fee. We have three council members that live in open space and pay the fee. We have some people in, in the audience here from the public that live in open space. I'd like to hear what they think maintenance should be of these trails. You don't, don't you have a trail behind your house, Brittany? Or close by and, and I, I'd like to hear what they say, yeah.
I'll, I'll tell you exactly what I think, Scott, because I like doing that. I feel like I've run most of trails in Highland, most of trails in Utah County, Murdock Canal. When it comes down to it, what I'd love to see is a trail, gravel on the side of the trail. I don't think that you need twenty feet of trail corridor on each side. That doesn't make sense to me whatsoever. I love what Murdock Canal has done. You've got your trail, you've got your gravel on the side and then from there, you know, if it backs up to houses, I'd like to see a little bit of space in between the trail and the gravel and the house, but it doesn't make sense to me when you call it native vegetation. If it was truly native vegetation, why would you need to mow it down? I don't see Murdock Canal, their native vegetation being mowed down. Maybe I'm wrong on that one, but it is truly native vegetation. It looks gorgeous. What I see is mowed down weeds and dirt and even if it's mowed down, it doesn't look nice. I don't know, Scott, you do the trails also, what do you think?
Well, yeah, and I, I know where you're coming from on Murdock Canal Trail and different things, but there's a difference between trails between, behind people's homes in a neighborhood and the Murdock Canal Corridor.
Yeah.
I mean, it's behind homes, but oftentimes it's fenced off and why, so I'm just wondering what you would think, I mean, because you live in an open space neighborhood, about these trails behind homes, how often should they be maintained to kind of keep people happy? Because some, a lot of people are maintaining them themselves, either with maintenance agreements or just doing it. So obviously, they would like more maintenance, but I, you know, I don't live there, so it's hard for me to say how many times a year. And that's what Nathan's asking.
All they really ask is not to have thorns and weeds all over the trail and not to have six-foot weeds behind their house. But I feel like in order to do that, you have to have some sort of barrier between those weeds and the trail itself, like rock or gravel or something like that in order for it not to encroach upon the trail. So that's something that I would like to see. And then other than that, just keep the weeds down to a minimum. But I think, I'll be honest, what people really want to see behind their houses is no weeds whatsoever. They'd like to see it nicely manicured. And whether they do that or the city does that, that's up to us and them. But in all honesty, I mean, don't you think that's what people want to see or what they've expressed?
But the question is, is how to do that. So I run along on the trail that's just north of Caddy Lane, that's in open space.
And they do a great job.
I mean, that's a beautiful area because everyone's landscaped up to the trail. And then on the other side of trail, it's very natural and there's marshes, then you have the golf course. I, I would think if every trail in the city looked like that, everybody would be really happy.
So on the other side of Caddy Lane, that natural vegetation, is it ever mowed down?
I've seen it mowed down.
Okay.
I, I've ran that all summer and it's mowed down periodically. Josh could tell us how often it's done, but I think it was done at least twice that I could see, or parts of it were. And parts of it's grassed and maintained.
I mean, what do you think about people maintaining it up to the trail like Caddy Lane does?
I tell you, it works there, it's beautiful.
Yeah.
Well, it looks like on that map there, that's a no maintenance area.
Well, yeah, we don't cut anything on the north side of that trail, where the golf course is.
Well, there's some grassy areas and there was an area or two that I could tell had been cut. Now, maybe the neighbors did that, I don't know.
I, I think so. Josh, correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't mow that at all.
So the neighbors do it?
The neighbors must be doing it, I guess.
So on Caddy Lane, do the people own the property up to the trail or how is it being maintained so nicely?
No, there is a small piece that we own on the south side, but they've built retaining walls to it, they've, you, you've seen, they, they have the painted rock areas that they've done and.
Are there maintenance agreements there or they just kind of do it?
But it's beautiful. Yeah.
I mean, I don't know how often grass should be mowed because I have people for that too, because I have kids, so I don't mow my grass. But what I think about natural vegetation, to me, the only time the natural vegetation I expect it to be mowed is when it's growing over the trail. So, I mean, I don't know how often that has to happen, but where I live, up where the, what do you call it, Nathan? Up where I live?
Your point?
No, that's not what he called it.
Dog.
Uh-huh, yep, up there. Like when the natural vegetation has grown over this, the sidewalk, then I think that's when it needs to be mowed. So I don't know how many times a year that happens, but to me, that's kind of like the, the threshold is when it takes over the trail or the sidewalk.
Well, we have Josh here, maybe we should ask him, when does that happen? What is the recommendation? If we don't want to have the weeds coming in, you know, what, what do we need to do to keep that grass? Like, I wouldn't love to see weeds in my backyard either. You know what I'm saying, if it's back there, what do we need to do and how often does it need to be maintained? I mean, I can say three times because it's, it's more than what we're doing, but maybe it's, it, you know, it's different, maybe in different areas or different type of soil and that's where you have to maybe have Josh help us out. Because that's what you're asking, hey, when it gets here, we need to have it. We know what, what, when we want it, when it, what it looks like. It's just, how, you know, if they're so busy, what's the plan to get it done? What do you guys want from the city council? Are you looking for a specific, hey, go three times or you, you know?
I've, I've started writing down the list of what your expectation is. So what, what are we not doing that you think the residents would like and you would support doing differently? That's what we're asking.
How are you going to be able to get, you know, with the mayor, with the weed? And I'm talking the stickery thorns, because that's, if you're walking, you get them in your shoes, they get them in the tires.
Well, right now, I have written down that we will look into mowing every native area three times and see what the cost to do that is. That's above and beyond what we're currently doing. And then we are look, going to look into a weed abatement program and see what that's going to cost and what it's going to entail. What else do we need to be doing? I'm hearing more trail maintenance as far as the edges. You'd like to see gravel on the sides of the, edges of the trail. What other things? Do, do we feel like we are meeting expectation of mowing?
You're talking mowing in the native vegetation area, the open space?
Well, and I've, just native first, so I've already written down three times. Is there something different that I need to look at?
I'll agree with three times.
I guess my question for Josh, would three times take care of the issue where if we say do not let it get more than four inches tall, I mean, is that what you want? Why, why do we have to do to make sure that those weeds aren't getting more than four inches tall or that grass in that area? Because that's when it would start, that, you know, if you're walking off the side, it hinders.
Well, Kurt, I, I think what we're asking is, is we as staff, for, for many years, we look at the native area as it shouldn't be mowed. It should look like what it looks like on the north side of the Caddy Lane Trail. That's what it should look like, but that is unacceptable to many residents over the last five, 10 years. And that's what's happened is we have been asked to add those areas to our mowing schedule and we get to it one or two or three times a year. But in our opinion, when it says on the plat, it is to remain natural, we didn't have any anticipation of, of mowing it from day one. It's been added over the years. Is that the expectation to keep doing that? Or do we want to, like Kim says, let it go natural? Let it be weedy?
I think there's cer- certain areas in the city we do want natural. I mean, you don't want to be, you know, with the expense of mowing three times down, down at the bottom of Dry Creek. I mean, we can keep, I know there's some, some areas that we try to keep the thistles out of, but I'm not sure the whole area has to have everything three times to keep it mowed down.
We're looking for general. You know, we, we could be here for six weeks if we went through each parcel, so we're looking for general, then we'll come back with an overall, an overall plan. But it's been very clear that, as Todd mentioned, that, that there's been some dissatisfaction from the council and residents on it. And so we're trying to define what you would like. And, because that's the only way we're going to get over the hump.
When we've done it up in the Windsor Meadow area where you've done it three times, did that seem to take care, to keep it manageable where it's not, you know, because they use those kind of sidewalks up there. How's, how's that been up in that area?
It just depends who you talk to.
Well, you know, you have.
I, I wish I had better information.
So I understand the argument that maybe we should let it just go natural and not mow it or that, but the problem is, is those areas then become fire hazards, especially if they're between homes and different things. So I, I don't think we can justify no maintenance at all. Now, there are places where no maintenance at all, like the north side of the Caddy Lane Trail is probably appropriate. But I, you know, between the homes, where all those little trails are in Windsor Meadows, I just can't imagine you'd let that go. So I, I guess I'll lean towards the three times a year at least.
And I'll support Scott on that. I mean, I think where you have trails behind homes, I think we need to be more sensitive in the maintenance.
Would council be willing to have Josh come up and, and address if three times is enough? Is that okay? Josh, do you have a minute that you come up and just tell us what three gives us as far as like when we should do it and, and keeping it looking short?
Okay, so this year, we were done by July, probably about the 12th of July, I think we were done mowing. We'd stopped at that point. I was super concerned about fire. So some of those areas are right next to those natural vegetation areas would have taken off with one spark. So we did really well. Doug is a retired man that works as hard as he can work. He usually never comes back for lunch, he eats lunch on his tractor. He probably has the worst job in the city if you ask me because it is dusty, it's nasty. But it really depends on rain, but typically three, I don't know that three is going to be, going to be the magic number. I think in some areas, it probably will drive up a desire for more. But that's, that's kind of the way I look at it. I mean, if you drive by and look at the front of Windsor, that was three times, there's probably some weeds well over a foot, probably eighteen inches now there.
What is your magic number then?
It depends on where you, what part of the.
It depends on the year too, right?
I think it depends on the year and it depends on the location. I mean, I, I would believe that many would like it behind their house, probably no higher than the grass. I think that's what their expectation is, but that's just me assuming.
But what would that require in terms of frequency?
I would bet some of those could be six times a year.
So would you say it would be logical to create zones where we could determine six times a year, four times a year, three times a year, depending upon the type of vegetation, the, the neighborhood, the, the plants, et cetera? Would, would that be something that you think would be useful?
I think it would probably help. I think it would probably help some of the residents, you know, it needs to be done six times behind their house. I think it would help some of them. So that, that's probably where we would, we need to distinguish those areas, like Wimbledon where it's right behind their house. I mean, when I think of it, it's literally all the open space and my mind's literally behind almost everybody's house. There's just a few chunks that's not. I mean, you really have, most of it will be that much. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
When you, when you incorporate it all, it's, it's literally almost all the trails are behind everybody's houses. So, I mean, there's been thousands of dollars spent on native seeds to seed those areas. They probably would look different today if they'd had a chance to ever grow and reseed and reseed and reseed, but they've never got that opportunity. So I think at this point, we will always be mowing them. Does that make sense?
Yes.
A native seed generally takes up to five years before it germinates. So you think about the cycle that some of those would have, we'd probably have some areas filled with some wildflowers blooming at certain times. We probably will never see that because they've always been mowed, they never had a chance to seed, they'll probably just end up withering away. And that taps the mayor's puncher weeds, that falls in that category. You have the puncher weed, that seed can sit there for five years before it gets the right germination period. Whether it got cold enough in the wintertime for it to germinate in the spring or it got enough moisture during the spring to germinate during July.
Hey, Josh, you know more about this than we do. I mean, I really have no idea about mowing the lawn or germination or seeds or any of that. If you lived in an open space neighborhood where your house backed the park or back
If you lived in an open space neighborhood where your house backed the park, or backed a trail, I mean, what, what would your expectations be? What would you do to maintain it if it was you? What would you like to see? If you had?
I, I think mowing it would be great, but I have, I have more than one. But I have one lady that calls every time we mow, and that she is super upset that we mowed the native weeds behind her house. She wanted to see them go to seed and go to the golden color and look great.
Because she probably understands that process.
Yes, and so I, and I have to tell her, we've had more complaints against that. So you have, I mean, there's probably a handful that are saying, I really want it to go to, to, to be the way it was supposed to be. And then you have a handful that has a different expectation. So, I mean, I would think that mowing would probably be happier for most people.
Do you think it looks good, mowing it down like that?
Um, I don't really like the look of it mowed.
Me neither.
Um, I, I think it looks better a little bit longer, but it does look worse once it gets to that hanging stage where it just kind of falls down because it's so large, because it's grown so much. We had a fire at the P.I. Pond, which was mowed. I don't know that it makes a difference if it's mowed or not, as fast as that fire went. So, I mean, I know lots of people complain about the, the fire danger, and I'm not a firefighter. I just watched that fire burn almost to our shop in a matter of minutes. That was mowed, that was literally six inches tall. So, I mean, I know we get complaints that way, but I thi- I think it's going to burn either way. Um, I know, in either way. So I, I know people are upset, but, and we try to find that period and just cut it off, because one little spark from that tractor, if you haven't seen it, just has what we call a, a mower behind it that has blades that just spin. And those blades are just annihilate, because they're hitting rocks, they're just hitting everything, and just try to mow that, those weeds down. So, it does spark regularly, it's trapped underneath the brush hog part of the mower, but it's still, we have to be very careful on that part, as far as fire damages, that, danger there. So I think as we increase that, there's going to be a risk there, because it's going to go more into the season of, of fire danger. Does that make sense?
Yeah. What do you think about people who maintain it themselves and even maintenance agreements? Is that a help for you, or a hindrance?
I mean, it's great, but what point do we stop on water? That, that's my concern. And I'm a resident of Highland, and I see how much water we're rolling through. And I, I see it clo- more than any, and, not more than the P.I. guys, but I see how much water we're rolling through that we weren't planning on. That's what scares me, is that when the P.I. guy says, we're about out of water for the year, we've almost used all our water out of Deer Creek. It, that scares me as a resident. I'm like, well, what about next year? Because if we have a terrible water year this year, next year could be pretty bleak. So that, that, that's, that scares me. I mean, yeah, if we did all those areas, but that water's not accounted for. And so, yes, when meters get put on, some people will be able to afford to pay that, some will be like, I'm done paying that.
Are there any other, like, water-wise vegetation, or any water-wise landscaping that could be done?
Which qualifies under native plants. Now, what some people believe is beautiful native plants, others have no desire in seeing. You know, sagebrush, native plant, doesn't use very much water. I mean, there's a list of plants, and you can see them at the University Parkway, out there in the gardens there, above the, the donut place.
Just be cream.
Yeah.
It's, it's central Utah Water.
Water conservative.
Yeah, Central Utah Water has a, a little museum that you can go look at.
Yeah, I've been there, they have a great exhibition there.
Mm-hmm. But, that's possible, but there's gonna, I mean, that's, I'm not going to be able to do it, and Brian's going to have to help, and we're going to have to have residents on board for, in my guess, 10 years, to get that reseeding process, those plants growing, to get to that process. And I'm not sure that the patience is there. I mean, I'd love to, and I'd love to try some test areas and see if that would work. I mean, I'd, I'd be willing to try.
I'd love that, because then it'd be a permanent, long-term solution, I guess, is what we're kind of looking at here.
Mm-hmm.
Not a quick fix, I don't know.
So, just some information that may help.
Thanks, Josh.
From a code enforcement standpoint, usually, we pick up with weed complaints in July and August. That's when they most come in. So if you're, if you're focused on, and Josh is correct, when he, when he says, most of this is, for lack of a better word, urban. Uh, we have about 12 and a half mile, 12 and a half acres of land and trail corridors. So, um, but most of that is in urban versus what I call other areas like Drake Creek Hollow, or, or things like that. But you're looking at, uh, but most of that's in August or September. So if you're, if the concern is to keep weeds down and things like that, you're probably looking at, you know, from a logic standpoint, you're looking at a mow in August and one in September. And, and then, you know, one at the end of the year and one at the beginning. So you're looking at at least four. Just from a logic standpoint. July, August, and then one at the ending, and then one at the beginning. So where did we end up?
I think we have to kind of come back to our Parks Department and ask them, with the recommendation, are they recommending four times? I mean, you know, you know, it, it is hard. We do have some residents that would like to see the natural area. When it was, when it was brought into the city, that was the vision, is it was going to be. But at the same time, the residents, they are frustrated because it's behind their homes. Some are frustrated because they feel like they're paying a fee, and it's got, not getting maintained. I mean, it, it feeds every, all those emotions. And so, you know, so what, you know, is what we're saying is we need to go four? See, to me, I think we got, the weeds, I think it's the little stickery things once they get out into the, the, the trails, is where we, where we also get a lot of concerns.
Well, and I think the issue is, is one size doesn't fit all. I know you, you want kind of a general idea, but there are parts in the city that probably never have to be mowed. There are other parts that should be mowed frequently. And so I think we're going to, as we do this trail priorities now, we may need to look at these areas and come up with a priority and say, maybe along Alpine Highway between there and Apple Blossom and Windsor Meadows, maybe you need to mow that more often, but you don't have to mow on the north side of Catty Lane. And, and, and so I'm not sure that we as a council can really say three or four times a year, when there's some areas that don't need to be mowed at all, and others that need to be mowed six times a year. So I, I think we need to have some sort of prioritization, a little bit to help us make some sort of decision, because I don't think we can say one size fits all. And I think you're asking us to do that, but I don't think we can.
So who's best equipped to identify zones?
We can, but we, we're starting from.
Well, I'm asking the question, council members, are you willing to sit down and say, okay, this is a zone that I think is different than this zone, or needs to be looked at differently than that zone?
I'd be happy to help with that, because I've been around the city for some time. I mean, at least make some ideas. I mean, you need to know for next year, basically, right?
Are you saying the council needs to come up with a, or the, the staff? I mean, they're the ones mowing out there, they, they're.
Well, except, there's an expectation level that is independent of Nathan, or Todd, or Josh. Is the council willing to say, I, this area I think needs to be looked at differently than this area? Like Windsor Meadows versus Wimbledon versus North Canterbury versus the Highland, Highland Hills, or?
And maybe that's what we do, is we.
Staff could do that.
We categorize the, the open space area as A, B, or C, and the A gets mowed five times?
Well, I, I just say, it needs, say whatever it is you think is appropriate for that area. Needs weeds no longer than X, and then we could let staff say, well, in order to do that. But it, it's going to depend, and this is where it gets tricky, is, it will, it's where, all of this is weather-dependent, right? And, so you, you, you kind of have to throw, you have to make an estimate, but you, we need to have in the budget enough leeway to cover, you know, A to, A to B, right? Because it, it's not going to be the same every year.
Right.
But I, I know staff, I mean, council is the one that made a commitment to do something, but we, we can, we can put that off on staff, but it was your commitment to do something. So I would expect that you would get involved and sit down. Maybe it's you sitting down with staff and saying, okay, this is what, I think this area has an expectation that's like this, and this area has a different expectation. You can ask staff to do it, but then you're not going to be happy.
Well, I mean, staff has already prioritized, we can see it right there. I mean, right, what they, what they think should be done when, so.
Right, so that's what we're currently doing, but obviously what we're currently doing, we're never going to make 100% of the people happy. Right, just, not going, maybe never even 70% of the people happy. But somebody needs to say, you know, I think this area is different than that area, and we have an expectation of fewer weeds, or, use Catty Lane as an example. We like this, how, how it looks. Are there other areas in the city that are, would be appropriate for that look?
I think, I think if we add some parameters, staff can go in and apply some parameters. Right now, we know council's frustrated, that's what we know, with the current operation.
Okay, so tell us what parameters, ask us questions, and we'll help answer back.
Or, maybe it's more, a more efficient use of our time for, now that we know this is the question that you want answered, okay, so now that we know you would like us to say how many times you want us to mow, now we can go back and take this and spend some time looking around and talking to people, and then we can come back and say, after I've thought about this one question specifically, then, then this is what I think. But I think, um, maybe to sit around here for hours tonight, talking about what should be mowed, how many times, I'm not sure that's the most productive use of our time tonight. Like, I understand that's the question you want answered, and I think it's a fair question. I'm just not sure that sitting here tonight, looking at that map, is going to be the best way for us to answer that question.
And, and she's absolutely right.
Yeah, and, and I would add to that, I don't know that council could ever answer it that way. They could say, in this area, this is what we expect. We weeds don't, we, we have this lack of weeds of this type, or it doesn't get this high, but I wouldn't be qualified to say, in order to achieve that objective, what do you need to do? Right?
So, I mean, maybe it would be more productive if, um, if we got, now that we have this packet that has such amazing information in it, and we've got all the information from the mayor, and we have it all in one place, maybe it's more productive if we get from staff then a list of specific questions that you want answered. And, um, we can look through all this information now, because I feel like this is so much that just as I'm looking over it, I have just a lot of questions and ideas. And then maybe it's a better idea for you guys to give us, you know, specific questions that you would like us to answer, give them to us ahead of time, and we can look through this and see if we have specific things. And then we can revisit it at some time later, when we know the, the specific things. Because this is just, like, it's, it's too much for me right now.
Well, and the bottom line is, is we're going to have to find some way to fund it and staff it.
Yeah, and I just, it's.
I mean, what I get worried about is we're going to have the staff go do all their, their work, and also they come back for funding, and we're going to go, where do we find it at? How do we do this? And how do we move forward? You know, it, I, I call, we're, and, and, better yet, they're making a case that they want to add an extra one or two to help with, with, with this. You know what I mean, they, they want to add some employees. That's, that's kind of what they're saying, hey, we need help, and that's going to be cost. And so as we're going forward, it's, as a, as a council, we need to know where the money's coming from and how we're going to, how we're going to do that. Because they can go do all the work, but if we don't know where the funding's coming from, it's going to be hard to move forward.
Well, and I feel like anything I would ask additionally for, for staff to do tonight, or anything that I would say, would not actually really be fair of me to ask, because I don't, I haven't had, I haven't done a great job looking through the information now. So I don't really feel comfortable asking you to do anything or making a recommendation until, um, until I've had a chance to think about it a little bit more, because I don't want you to waste your time. I don't want you to waste your time coming back to me with recommendations about, you know, let's mow five times a year, or seven times a year, and this is how much it would cost. Like, I don't, I don't want to waste your, your time that way until we have more of a specific idea what, what we want. Plus, can we take like a two-minute break?
I would entertain that, uh, reconvene at 9:15? And then we have 45 minutes to wrap up. And that gives staff a chance to say, here's what's, when we come back, can we ask staff to say, here's other, here's what we have left to share with you, and, and then.
Mayor, we're, we're, we're done, so.
Well, aren't you going to talk about properties that could be sold, and?
I thought you had encroachments on the list here.
Encroachments.
We had, we have that information if you want to go over it, but given the conversation now, it's probably more appropriate for you, for us to give you the list of questions, and that we, the information that we need from you before we get into those other issues.
So, do, do you feel like, Brittany, do you feel like we know what needs, do, do we know enough to end the meeting now productively?
Um, I don't know if we do, because I would like the question, like, I want very specific questions. Like, how many times a year should we mow natural vegetation? That's a very specific question. How many times do you want us to spray weeds? Like, those are specific questions. I feel like the more specific details that we can get about what you would like us to give you direction about, the more productive we can all be next, next time. Does that make sense?
Uh, certainly.
You can tell me, you, we're, I mean, we're friends, you can tell me. You can tell me if I don't make sense, it won't be the first time.
Well, you know, from, from our perspective, this was, this is an idea to have a discussion, because we knew that the council wanted something different. And so we were looking to have a discussion on what defined different. I know there's a, we knew that there was a lot of moving pieces to it. We knew that not one specific solution is going to apply to viewpoint, that applies to Wimbledon, that applies to Windsor, we knew, we know that. But without knowing what's different is, or what that vision of different is, we don't know how to help you. And, and we can produce all the fancy maps you want, we can do encroachment, we can say, hey, we can sell this, we can do that. But without knowing what different means, we can't give you guidance on what costs are, what it's going to take to do this. I mean, you could say, hey, we want everything golf course green. And I'd say, okay, that's going to cost $20 million. Well, that's not going to work, we all know that. So without some kind of guidance of what different means, I don't know what questions to ask you guys.
Right, but I mean, so I think this is why we need to take a little break, because, um, because I feel like, to me, when the question is, how many times do you want us to, to mow?
That was, that wasn't, that was an idea of to get the conversation started, because one of the concerns is weeds grow too high, okay? So, what is different?
Right, and I think it wa- it was a, a question that you wanted to get the conversation started, but it was also a question that you wanted a specific answer to.
So, there's a bigger issue here. The, the big picture that we're trying to get at is that, for many, many years, we have heard staff is not meeting expectation. We've heard it from the residents. I, I deal with it on a daily basis and meet with residents, and I have to apologize. I do. Over and over and over, I have to apologize for the bad job that we're doing. And, and so, we as staff, it's frustrating. On one side, we know what we should be doing. We know what residents deserve in a lot of cases. On the other side, there's a funding issue, where we are way understaffed and way underfunded. So, how do we deal with that? We are asking city council tonight, what We are asking city council tonight, what is the expectation? Is it okay if we keep doing what we're doing and apologizing to residents for trails that, you know, were supposed to be natural, but that's not what happened many, many years later? It was a good idea, you know, fifteen years ago, but it's not what the residents expected, and, and it's ultimately not what we expected as staff. We didn't expect to be mowing this six times a year.
Todd?
Go ahead.
I have a question for you, and I think that's exactly what you said. You know what you should be doing, and what the expectations are, and what should be happening, and you have to apologize because it's not being met. So if you lived here in Highland, and you, you are an expert, you know exactly how stuff should be maintained, what would you do differently? You know, let's not even...
Does everyone want my opinion?
I want your opinion, Todd. Tell me, what do you think? Because you know what? There are residents that expected to be manicured like a, a golf course. They really do, and it's not going to happen. We know that. But I want to know what you think.
I, I personally think that any place that we could do what Caddy Lane does is great.
Thank you.
Because, and, and, and I apologize for those that are going to be offended by this, or, but I, I'm a yard guy. I love my yard. I spend a lot of time there, and so I like things to look nice. If I lived in some of these open space subdivisions, I'd be upset. So I think that we need to look at these areas and let people landscape up to the trail where it makes sense.
Oh, Todd, we're still on the same page here.
But on the backside, residents have to understand they live in an open space subdivision, and on the backside of those trails, it's native. It's, there's no other way to do that, and there's places in the city that I apologize to residents, that we have utilities. There's no way that we can give up those areas, and they're going to look like that. But anywhere we possibly can, let them landscape to the trail.
Todd, that's what, exactly what I'm looking for. Caddy Lane. We all love Caddy Lane. I, I think we should let residents landscape up to the trail. I'm going to say that right now. I think residents are more than willing to do that, as long as they have that maintenance agreement, and then the native on the other side as well. I mean, I think you know exactly what needs to be done, so you tell us the budget, and we will work on getting the budget, I guess.
Well, and I, and I support selling off what we can sell off. I mean, why keep it? Why keep it?
What do you guys think? Do you guys support that?
But one, one issue that I have is that we have a lot of places in the city that was supposed to be natural, that we are now going to sell off, and now our water consumption skyrockets, where we never were, so there's a very fine line of allowing people to buy property and allowing them to do what they, if they want it to be one hundred percent pristine green in there, that's an issue. That's an issue. And so I am torn, as the city engineer, on what is best in some of those areas, but the very small places where we can landscape to the trail with some zero scape or whatever, because Caddy Lane, you look at that, a lot of it is zero scape.
Right.
It's not grass.
Or even along the city trail. There's areas along that city trail where they've zero scape themselves, and it looks amazing.
Yeah. So, that's my personal opinion, but we need to find the, there's a fine line of allowing water. As you know, there's many places that have, people have encroached on city property in Highland, that they're, they're stealing water. I mean, really, they're not paying for the water. They, the, the residents aren't.
But the only resolution to that is get everybody on water meters and figure up a fee per water meter.
But still, water was never submitted, or, or impact fee was never paid on that.
That's true, and I understand that, but the only way you can crack that is if everybody's on a water meter, and I thought we were, we're moving ahead with that. Didn't we, did we get the grant?
We haven't received that back yet. We submitted.
Is there a good chance we'll get it?
There's a lot of cities right now going for it because of the mandate that's going to be coming, so I don't know how many cities submitted, and that, that will depend on if we have a good chance or not. We asked for the max, so that, that also...
Because that, I mean, that to me is the only solution, because the other thing is education, and, because it's volunteer.
And the encroachment is kind of a, a, a different problem, because you've got people that have encroached thousands of square feet.
Tens of thousands of square feet.
So this, this is where our issue comes up. We go to Caddy Lane, I'm looking at the county map. Most of Caddy Lane's property lanes do almost go right up to the trail.
It's, it's, it's probably about four feet away.
So, so, you know, if they're going to maybe, so I guess that's the question when you come down with irrigation and water, it's probably not a real big concern if it's an extra four feet they're watering, but if we also have someone come in and they want to now grab a quarter acre of ground and maintain it or buy it, well, when I bought my property, I had to bring water shares in. I had to do, I had to, you know, I, I had to go do, you know, the impact fee that was there. You know, I mean, there's, there's a lot of things that also come to play when you start to do other things. That's, you know, so I, I think it depends. That's, that's maybe coming back to where you were at, Brittany. This one area, it's easy to do a Caddy Lane thing. The, where their property lane's at and the trail's only four feet, and we're telling them to maintain that four feet, that's not an issue really, probably to add the water. But if they're going to start saying, hey, I'm going to grab thirty feet between now and the trail, that starts to add to our water. It starts to add to a lot of other, you know, if everyone did that, then we start to have real water issues. I, I mean, and we can use water as one of the things, is I actually favor trying to do something with maintenance agreements. You know, with your, it, now, the cities went that way before. I think in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, that was one of the, the steps that, guys, this is not a new meeting we're having tonight. In two thousand eight, two thousand nine, the city council had several work sessions to try to work through it. They did a motion. One of the motions was to let the residents enter into a maintenance agreement.
And we revised it in two thousand twelve.
And in two thousand twelve, it's because there were issues with some not doing it that they said were going to. Some didn't want to put landscaping in, because they were worried that the city might come grab it. So that, because it's a one-year agreement, I think is, you know, so they, they wanted to know, if I'm going to do a maintenance and then do an improvement, how long's my maintenance agreement? Then that comes the legality, you know, I, I'm not sure, we don't have our attorney here, if we can go longer than a year. I mean, that, because I, I remember hearing things that way.
So, let me, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to remake my motion to take a two-minute break. But also, before I did that though, Todd, I wanted to say too...
I second it.
Thank you. And I wanted to say though, that, to me, I don't think you have anything that, that you need to apologize for. I'm certainly not expecting an apology, and to me, I see the problem as, as a funding issue. And to me, the, the problem that we're here to solve is how do we take care of, of that funding part of the issue? To me, it's not an issue of what's wrong with public works, or what's wrong with that department. To me, it is a, how do we fix the expectations, and how do we fix the funding piece? So, to me, I don't think you need to apologize to anybody. Except I do want to take my break.
So, it's been moved and seconded. Let's do a break until nine thirty. Is it okay with that? Nine thirty, yeah, we...
Hey Nathan, when we get back, can you introduce the new Tara?
So.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
So, at work, I hear a lot from our engineers about bandwidth. And they say they can do anything, they can accomplish anything if they had the bandwidth, which would be time, opportunity, funding, et cetera. And I think we're trying to convert a complicated, a complex issue into something that's overly simplistic. And you talk about, Todd, what you accomplish with your bandwidth is, is pretty amazing. I agree with, with Brittany. And that is, I don't think we have to apologize, because your bandwidth has to operate under the constraints, budgetary constraints, water constraints, which I didn't even think about prior to the meeting today, but budgetary, water, a lot of different, and then also the, the preferences of, of residents, which we have to take into consideration, because we're here to serve them. And so with all of those constraints placed upon our bandwidth, it makes it a complicated problem. So I think that we have to, I think we should just be honest with people, which we are, we're very transparent here about our budget, about everything, and go to them and say, here's our constraints, these are things we can't change, and that is the budget, and that is the amount of water we have, and maybe two or three other factors, and say, we can do anything, as long as we have the money, are you willing to pay for it? So what are your expectations here, and are you willing to pay for it? Here's what we can do right now. And then present the, the constraints and say, I think, say, okay, we can do this, but we want zero escape, because we don't have the water. Or we can do this, but you're gonna have to come up with, you, you'll have to be willing to pay some extra money in, in taxes, or property tax, whatever it is. So I think you're doing a great job, I think it has to do with bandwidth in, in many ways and many considerations, and I think we just need to go to people and say, this is what we're working with, how do you wanna, how do you wanna handle it?
I think those are really good ideas. I, you know, I think the mayor had some really good suggestions in his study he did, that he's talked to us in different things. And, you know, I think we need to pull as many parks as we can into the general fund. And I think the trails need to be covered by the general fund, but then I think we need to address, you know, the open space fee, does it need to be adjusted down, hopefully? But, but the bottom line, it's always gonna be funding. So do we, do we wanna look at a, a park tax, or a similar thing that American Fork does? Will people support that? I mean, by and large, I've, and the, often on ten years I've been on the council, people in the city don't like new taxes, but, you know, at some point, we need to say, if we don't have the funds, then we can't do these things, and do we need to be maintaining quite as much as we're maintaining? And, and so, you know, I think we're gonna have to have some public meetings, and, and kind of education things like they did with the road fee and things, and say, okay, you know, this is what we can do, this is what we propose, because I think we have these magic expectations in the city, and we don't have the staff or the funding, I mean, that's what I'm hearing tonight, and which I've always been aware. So do we need to get rid of some of these areas? Do we need to sell them? Do we need to have private citizens more involved? I mean, can we come up with some sort of master plan? And it's a complex thing, I mean, we, I've been talking about them since 2009, and I don't live in an open space area, but trying to come with some solutions, some things we presented from the Open Space Committee has worked well, some haven't. I mean, there's been a lot of opposition to surplusing any neighborhood option trails, and I can understand that, but if we have those trails, they need to be maintained, so that people can enjoy them and they're safe, and then we need to work out some sort of the expectations about what people want about those trails. So we've given some good examples of things that are working, so I'm just wondering if we can find a way to help that work in other parts of the city. So I mean, we're just still talking in generalities, but it's a funding staff issue as much as anything, I think.
Well, I wanna kind of apologize if you wanna.
Oh, no, you go first.
Let's look really big picture what we're heading into this next year. And, and as we, we look big picture, we have a situation with Pleasant Grove that has a road fee that has been, that they've went up, so I'm just saying, we, we charge a road fee in Highland, we also charge a public safety fee, we might have some issues coming in this next legislative issue, where we might need to not charge fees, but have them part of the property tax. Now, I recognize you're going, hey, they're already paying the eighteen fifty for the road, and you're paying eleven fifty for public safety, it's already money, but that will be an increase that we're gonna already be going after. Now, as we go, and if we said, okay, next year, we're also gonna be thinking, because this, the only time we can increase our funding is gonna be next year with the property tax, then you're gonna say, okay, we're gonna add on fees to try to maintain the parks. We have to be careful, and this is the political environment we're in, we have to be careful if we put that on and we start getting opposition to a, a park fee, and we don't, and we lose... So it, it's a political, like I said, we, I think we can have some open houses, maybe get a sense on how people are thinking, but we've gotta be careful, that we have to have public safety and we need to have roads. Now, doesn't mean we don't need to maintain things, and where we can get money. Luckily, with the, with the trails, we're getting money for the trails from the quarter cent tax, that, that the county instituted about a year and a half ago, and so that, that's kinda helped us out with coming up with some money there. And so some of that money actually that was going to trails, did go to open space, I believe, or to, or to parks, is that not correct, Nathan? That some of that money then was going, did we keep all the money that we had budgeted for trails before we got the quarter percent sales tax?
Yes.
Did we keep it in trails, or did we move it into the, the parks?
Yeah, so the last five years, on average, we've had about thirty-five thousand dollars for trails.
In open space.
In open space and parks, between the two of them.
I thought it was seventy total.
No, it was twenty in one and fifteen in the other, correct?
Okay.
It was thirty-five, and so we added the hundred thousand, and we had a hundred and thirty-five thousand in the budget this year.
So hopefully, your, your trails might be able to come back. I mean, I'm just trying to think where we're gonna get funding, I mean, because that's, Tim, it all comes down to, you know, hey, if we got unlimited source of funding, we're able to do a lot of stuff, correct? Is it all funding, I mean, is that, is our issue funding?
Ultimately, yes.
Did you just say, is our mission funding?
Is our...
Issue.
Issue.
Yeah, of course the issue's funding, but the response that I typically get from the people that I speak with is, sharpen your pencil. And we've sharpened that pencil so much, it's a stub, it's basically a little point at the, with an eraser at the end.
Well, it, it...
We're, I, I really think that we're responsible, it's not like the federal government where they have ten thousand dollar wrenches that we can eliminate. This budget is tight, and I think it's very well done, and we can't sharpen our pencils, really, it's...
Well, it's just like, how can we go, you know, we, we've talked about Mount Ridge Park, we've never even brought that up, how do we go build a new park that has to have more maintenance on it, that when I was talking to the mayor, it's probably gonna be eighty thousand dollars a year extra to maintain, how could we, as a council? We have money sitting in a capital account to be able to go towards that park, but if we start to build it, we have to maintain it. You know, you, I mean, and maybe that's the...
What's the potential, using this as a specific example for a general application, have we done any type of studies on use fees for the park, for example, from soccer leagues or lacrosse teams, or?
For pickleball.
For pickleball. Have we done any studies on that to determine how that would offset the eighty thousand dollar cost? So what do you think we could raise in a year?
Well, I know we've had several groups approach us, but the cost versus the benefit hasn't panned out yet, because what they're asking is basically for a private park that they, that we may own, own the property, but they own the rights to, and that's unfair to our residents, so there hasn't been a proposal come in that was, was fair to both parties yet. Am I correct in saying that? Nathan?
We could dedicate a, a specific percentage of the park to raise money, that only makes sense, or get sponsorships, or do something, because obviously, we can't increase our, our expenditures by eighty thousand dollars and not have an increase in revenue. So I, I think saying that it's not fair is not fair, because we have to get the money from somewhere. So we could say, we can dedicate thirty percent of the park fifty percent of the time, but they can't use it during prime hours, for example.
But, Tim, there's no one that's willing to come in to do that, it's the reverse, it's that...
They want prime time.
Our residents can get on the park on occasion if they want, but they can't do anything organized, they can't, those are the types of proposals that have come in, which is completely off balance from what is fair to our residents, and so that's why we haven't built the park, is because we don't have the funds to do it, so...
And I know we're, you know, I know we need to kinda get back to the maintenance, but...
Right.
Arsenal Soccer just did an agreement with Lehigh, the best way maybe is to go look to see what they did down there with their Peck Park, to understand what type of agreement it was ending into, because that's what we would, I would assume that others are asking us to do.
That's a great idea, let's do that.
So, I mean, but, but like you said, Todd, are our residents gonna be okay, you know, if this is how we're getting the park put in, that for ten years, we've allocated a spot for the prime time, you know, the, the fast pass area, that's where they had, that we can't use it. And so, but coming back to the, the, your maintenance issue, the reason I brought up funding is I think the maintenance comes back, is it's gonna have requests for funding, and then we have to go, okay, how are we gonna fund it? We talked about a RAP tax, what do you think, Mayor? Am I kinda, you know, when I brought up, hey, the concern is, is we might be having an, an environment we're heading into, where we might have to be raising taxes this next year?
I, I think the RAP tax stands on its own, I think if, if we lose the ability to charge a transportation fee, it, it's a, it's a sellable thing to go to residents and say, look, we were charging you a fee, now we need to move it to a property tax, you're, you're gonna, you're gonna be paying the same roughly, we lose the benefit of having a sunset clause, but we can work on the legislature to allow that in the future, that, that's a possibility. So I think that's a sellable thing, but where, where it would get, and I, I wondered if we could do this or not, and I've just decided we can't, if, if we go the route of, or if we have to go the route of, of going to a property tax to replace the fee, I don't think we can add anything in that, because then it's not a clean bill. I, I think we just have to say, this is what it is, and it's just replacing this lost revenue. The RAP tax is, you vote on separately, the only reason we would have to, we would vote on the property tax is if somebody ran a referendum against it, but I think like on the road fee, when we articulated to the residents what problem we were trying to solve, this would be easier, because it's just, we're going from A to B, and depending on the value of your home, you're gonna pay more or less than you were before. I think that's very sellable, I, I have another thought on some of the things that we've talked about, like Kim and Josh were talking about, the caddy lane-like features in other parts of the city, well, I would, I, I would think, when council got together, or met with staff, or however we're gonna proceed, that one approach we could take is say, okay, we think this is a good idea, let's identify a place that we can try this, and maybe there's some other things that we wanna try, and then, and then do one year, like, okay, we're gonna try this, see if it works, we don't, we wouldn't... We don't, we wouldn't necessarily say, let's do everything this way. Let's, okay, this sounds like a good idea. Here's a place we think it makes sense. And so let's try this approach on this small area. And then if it works, great. And if it fails, okay, it failed on a smaller area and we can, we can figure out how to make it work. But I, I did attend a couple of weeks ago, a meeting where, I, I'm going to take two minutes to do a little advertisement, where the lecturer asked a question two different ways. And I, I just, with myself, I tried it and I got a grading. It worked for me. And so first question is, and do, do this. So what, what should we do for trails? Okay. And, and take 20 seconds in your mind, scratch out a couple of ideas, and I'll give you 20 seconds. What should we do? And then ask yourself, what could we do? And they've done studies on this. And when you ask the question, what could we do? And you frame it that way in your mind, you end up with a much bigger list of what we could do. Now, some of the things you could do, you probably shouldn't do. But you'll get a bigger list to work off of. And then when you collaborate with each other, you might find out, well, that idea sparked this, which was entirely different from what you were thinking. But so I think, so when we're talking, sometimes instead of saying, should we do this, is what could we do? And then come up with some ideas. And, and I, I thought a, a really good one was, so can we do something like caddy lane somewhere in the city? And let's try it in a small area. That's, that's my thinking. So it's not going to happen overnight. And you have to do the test and you have to run it a year, maybe two. And if it works, then you can, if it works, then you can go to other residents and say, look, we tried this here, this worked. Are you willing to do the same, whatever it is in your area? So I don't know what those ideas are, but I, I like the caddy lane one. I, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I know we just have like 10 minutes left. And I think that we can come up with ideas and what should we do, what could we do? I just am not an expert in landscaping or on how, what could we do and what should we do? Because that's my, not my expertise. I think that what Todd knows we should do and his expectations, that's what I think we should do. And I just, I just want basically him to say, this is exactly if, what we should do. This is how it'd look good. This is a budget we need. And then we come up with a way to get him the budget.
Yeah, I, I would, I wouldn't argue with that. That's an approaching take. I just wouldn't do it everywhere. I would try it somewhere first. Say, okay, this is what Todd says we could do. Well, that sounds like a good idea. Let's try it. And then if it works, then, or if it fails, at least we'll have done it in a smaller place.
I guess are we all in agreement that our expectations are Todd's expectations? Are we in agreement on that? Because I think the, I think the question really staff wanted from us at the end of this discussion is, what are the expectations? What should we tell staff?
I guess for staff, are you asking, let's get specific. Open space maintenance, are you wanting expectations set for that? Or are you talking about the, the grass that we mow every week? I mean, what is that you're needing from, I mean, that's still.
Yes and no. And I agree with most of, the council has mentioned at some point tonight that one size doesn't fit all. We all know that. There's going to be certain situations that don't fit. And overall, we can, we can set an expectation, but there's going to be places in the city that that expectation doesn't work. And so I, I think we can agree upon that. I don't want this to be left up to staff. I, I, I'm fine to make recommendations. But ultimately, our job as staff is to provide information and the city council to make decisions.
So are you wanting two city council members to sit down with you and then it comes back to the council?
I, I am fine to do whatever. I work for the residents of Highland and whatever is in their best interest, I'm happy to do that. And, and Josh is too. We both want what's best for Highland City. So we're happy to do that. And, and really, tonight, we're not making any decision tonight, obviously. It is a, a, a work session. The, the point of tonight was to get some direction and, and to understand what city council expects moving forward. Because we've heard over and over that we are not meeting expectations. And so we as staff wanted some direction of what that expectation was. Now, if you feel like you would prefer that we as the experts come back with what we would recommend, then that's fine. We'll do that. It, it just may be difficult to meet our expectations. Because we kind of, we kind of know what we want. We want more funding. Because the, the concern, what we brought up at the very first, the very first slide, we have lost staff. Our staff is actually smaller now than it was 10 years ago. And we've increased in population and size of what we maintain. And obviously, when you have that, the level of service decreases. We've got staff doing more with less bodies than we did 10 years ago. So it just, my personal opinion is, we're behind the eight ball. We should have been increasing taxes every year to keep up with cost of gasoline, cost of equipment, cost of wages. We didn't do that. So we're, we as staff feel like we're way behind with an expectation that just keeps getting further and further away that we cannot attain. So that's the big picture here.
Todd?
Yes.
What would it cost to add an individual in, in one of those positions?
Well, a, a full-time employee right now in parks is roughly $60,000, $70,000? As far as wages and benefits, correct?
And benefits, yeah. So $60,000, $70,000?
Yes. And, and right now, I mean, if, if we were truly fully staffed, we're talking about two or three more individuals.
Okay, so $200,000?
In, in wages.
Correct.
That's not talking about equipment.
Equipment, yeah. Okay.
And maintenance on equipment. And so it, it's a, I want city council to leave tonight seeing it's a big problem.
I think we absolutely do see it's a big problem. And so I guess I want to leave tonight saying, yes, I want your recommendations. I want that backed up by how much your recommendations would cost us. And then when we meet together again, we will look at those costs, those recommendations, and then we will come to a work session to figure out how to pay for them. Whether it be maintenance agreements, it be, it's selling off land, it's a RAP tax, it's a property tax increase. Because that's what we can make decisions on, is how to get you the money that you need. Because we know, every single one of us know, you guys need more staff. And if the city of Highland complains about this, you can't have your cake and eat it also. You know, they got to pay for it if this is how they want the city maintained. And so I think as a city, that's, city council members, that's what we need to do is, these are the expectations, these are recommendations. And how can we as council members look at different ways to fund this? We haven't raised our property taxes. And when's the last time we raised them? Was it?
We actually lowered them in 2010.
2010.
We lowered it and before, I think it was 2008.
Yeah. And with your 3% inflation every year, I mean, it, it's, it's crazy to me. I've been out with Todd of how little staff they have with how much they have compared to other cities.
Doesn't it go up automatically? I mean, with the, well.
You would think.
No, no, this is, this is my point. It goes up automatically because it's not like California where the basis of your tax is what you paid for the house. It's based upon increased value of a home.
No, no. So the way it works is we basically say, this is the amount that we need. And even though people move in, basically that reduces the, the.
Well, no, new growth adds tax to us.
Correct, correct.
But I guess the better, if there was 1,000 homes and we said, we want a million dollars, and we don't ever change those 1,000 homes that don't grow, even if their property value goes up, we still only get a million dollars from that 1,000 homes.
If the property tax, if the property value goes up, doubles, then the rate gets cut in half.
Yeah, the value goes up, the certified tax comes down. They keep the same except for growth.
There's no inflationary component to property tax.
Tim, we have never changed that amount that we're getting. We've never changed. So over time.
Why do we pay more property tax?
That rate, over time, that rate in Highland has gone down.
Well, I pay more property tax. The valuation of my home goes up and I get a statement from the.
No, that's the school district.
That's school district.
That's the school district or the county increasing their tax.
So if you look at your city tax, it should be level over the last 10 years, roughly.
I, I do have one more, one more comment. I know it's quitting time. But I think sometimes we take a short vision of what we're trying to accomplish as a term, as opposed to a long-term vision. I liked what Josh said about how it, over time, we would be able to accomplish more of a natural landscaping situation, which would cost less and it would be, it would be beautiful. But we're looking at, okay, we have to mow it every year. I, I think we should take the mayor's idea, which I think is great, and take one particular area, get some input from Josh, I thought his idea was great, and say, it would take five years to accomplish this particular goal of getting this particular seed to germinate and to get all, all of these things to happen. Why don't we do that? Why don't we experiment in one area and take a long-term view as opposed to a short-sighted view?
So I kind of like the mayor's idea too. I, I think it'd be really good to pick a, a spot or two, maybe work with the residents along that trail and kind of work with what they expect, what we would have to do and what you recommend and, and experiment. Because, I mean, at least we'd have an idea.
So I know we're, we're almost done. I would be interested, well, I have one suggestion, I guess, but I would be interested to know what Brian thinks as the head of our Parks, Trees and Trails Commission and since, since he's here.
Took the words out of her mouth. Thank you. Brian?
We know you have to. I have to give Brian more than a minute.
The, I, I think this, this discussion has been really good. The issue that I don't think has been really addressed is the fact that there's not enough revenue and you're talking about one piece. So you heard staff talk about the fact that they get leftover equipment. Equipment's starting to fall apart. They're having to scrap for trying to find some equipment. What about the parks and the playgrounds and things like that that they don't have? What about the additional grass? What about all the other kinds of things that aren't being taken care of? That's not part of the budget. And every time something like that fails. And so there has to be a comprehensive plan to increase what we're actually spending on all of these areas. So you've talked about a, a potential plan for the trails today, but it's really the same thing. When we talk about trails, we're also talking about the parks and we're talking about the open space. That's how this whole thing started. So I, I just ask that you look at that whole package. And we may not be able to eat that elephant all at one time, but the eye should be looking out for that plan. And I think that there should be a plan by this council that creates similar to the trail, similar to the road. You've got a 10-year plan that says, this is what it's going to look like. And the residents will buy into that. Now, it may not take, they may not do it in a year. There may be little steps in getting there, but they will see that there is a plan and they will accept it at some point in time. And it may not be exactly the plan that you see today, but it will be a plan that everybody will be happy with. And not everybody likes the exact same look of trails. I happen to like weeds. I don't have any problem with weeds along the trail. I think they look great. Run the canal trail.
Except for puncture weeds.
Except for puncture weeds. That's a good, good exception. So, but there are other people that really like grass. And so we're never going to get there. So that, those are the things that we're just going to have to work through and figure out and say, these are the standards of what Highland is for the park, for the trail and for the open space. This is how much it's going to cost. And then get the, get the revenue that's going to take care of that.
And how long did it take to do the roads?
A long time.
Three, four years, right?
Yeah.
But it, when you have a plan, it's much easier. Because that's.
It is, and it, it gets everybody thinking about it and talking about it. And that helps generate the excitement. But thank you, Brittany, for, for asking.
Okay.
Can I just make one more comment? So while you guys were asking about specific things that we would like to see, so this may be like the wishlist, but if I was envisioning my, my perfect neighborhood and what I was buying with my open space fees, because you ask about what you think is in, somebody who lives in an open space neighborhood. In an ideal world and recognizing that that is not where I live, in an ideal world, I won't tell you all the reasons why that's not true right now. This is what I would see. I would see a place where, like Brian said, playground equipment was always replaced when needed. Where when a resident called with a complaint about a park or a sprinkler or something, there was a process where that was addressed in a timely manner and followed through with. So that resident knew who was addressing their concern and how. That there weren't dead spots in the lawn and sprinklers were fixed. That when trees died, they were replaced. That weeds on the trails along the perimeter were mowed enough so that they weren't overgrowing the trail. And that our trails on the inside of our neighborhood were manicured nicely or had the rocks on the, like, next to them. That our trails were in good enough condition that they were usable and then kids could ride their bikes without them being ruined with puncture weeds. And, yeah, and that our, and that our weeds were, were sprayed down. So to me, as somebody who is paying my $20 for open space, that is what I would expect. That the park equipment was usable, that the lawns weren't dead and marshy, and that trees were replaced when needed. The perimeter's cut down just so that the trails were usable and that the inner trails were nicely manicured. So I don't know if that is specific enough to be helpful or so specific that that is never going to happen, but that is my ideal world.
So I, I made notes of those things. And I think all of them are attainable with, with funding, except one.
My ideal world.
Yeah. Your ideal world, your ideal world is in Oregon.
No, and that's not true because I lived in Oregon. And that was not happening then either.
Well, okay, with, with one of, I, I just want to make sure everyone understands that there is one expectation in this city that is unattainable if we water properly. We live in an arid climate and everyone, everyone this summer should have had brown spots. It's the way it should be. And, and until we learn that, we, we're not going to fix the water's problem. You notice that our parks have brown spots. It's because we don't change it to put more water on than we should. But right now, they're, they're looking better and come spring, they'll be green, they'll be usable. But that's one thing that we need to start to educate better and, 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 and we do a good job. Well, we do the best job that we can as the city to follow those rules. And that's why you see brown spots and we get complaints, but we're not going to change because those water restrictions are there for that reason, to, to preserve the water for everyone, so.
And I think that's, I think that's a fair point. And I think it's also a fair point to say you bought in an open space subdivision and so part of that is just what you get.
I just want to thank staff. I mean, as we went through, you've put a lot of work inside the presentation. You've given a lot of information that I've never seen before. So thank you for taking that time to put together. I can see that you're in a hard, a hard spot as everything that Brittany says would be on my wishlist. And then also I look at my honeydew wishlist and I go, man, I have a wishlist at my house that's just like that. And I seem to maybe tackle one and another thing comes up on us and, and.
One?
Oh, I, I was thinking of projects I hadn't gotten done yet. But I want to tell the staff, thank you. You know, so the question is, as a council, if, if you come back with recommendations, we recognize there's some funding. Is it unlimited? No. Can we, we're going to have to look to see it. Can we move some things around? Maybe as we look at the trail plan, maybe you say, hey, 100,000 is what we lose. We can pull 35 out that was going there out of the general fund, not only into the open space, or into the parks and everything. Because we're trying to find funding. It really comes down to the funding source and trying to find out how to help you, help you out, so.
Okay, and so I understand Kelly owes us a song and dance. So Kelly, would you mind standing up and introducing yourself to the council?
Tyler did volunteer to beatbox though.
Kelly, will you go to the mic though, please?
So is it green? Yeah.
Just to y'all three? No. My name's Kelly Bronson. I started here last week. I'm replacing Tara. I go to BYU and I'm graduating in urban planning and I finish in December. So I'm just working here part-time right now and then I'll switch to full-time when I graduate. Hallelujah. Hallelujah.
So you said you're all, is, are you, where do you kind of reside from before you started going to BYU?
Tennessee.
Okay. I just, I picked up on that when you said you're all. I think that's a great characteristic. So just, I noticed that, so I thought, oh, where's she, where's her background from?
Yeah, that's where the y'all is from. That's the only thing that I kept from living in Tennessee, so.
Welcome to Highland.
Hey, thank you so much.
Mayor, can I ask the council one question or just, on, just as a council, maybe you should make sure, I guess there's two things to be aware. We have a park open house tomorrow, is that right, at 6?
Yeah, the Spring Creek open-
Opening ceremonies.
And I'm sure it's at Spring Creek, right? It's a pavilion.
Spring Creek, so Spring Creek at 6?
I thought we'd hold it at Mountain Ridge.
Did I say Mountain Ridge? I can't remember what it was. The next thing is, is our, I think, is it our youth council and our, you know, they're going to be having a trick or treat here at the splash pad on October 30th. As a city council, would we like to participate in having, be a booth and kind of doing something dressed up? If Scott gets his, or as the mayor gets his way, we'll all do the thriller. I mean, is that something that the 30th, as a council, we'd like to maybe try to do to be there and maybe get some candy or something to do?
I'm always for dressing up and dancing, to be honest, so I can do that.
I will never dress up nor dance, nor will I be there tomorrow to like play pickleball or anything with Kim, sadly.
You've already semi-dressed up because you did an apron.
I did do that. I know, that was my one contribution. I'm done.
Okay. If you're in, I can, I can check on the-
I can come dressed up. I'm not much of a dancer.
I will.
Nor am I.
We can change that.
I don't mind embarrassing myself.
We need to probably let Corinne know that we'd like to maybe have something there that night. The, I think the thought is, is they're having people sign up to be able to come at a certain time so there's social distancing, and then they would come through. And so just wanted to kind of make sure what everyone's kind of thinking that night, so.
And they're also looking for corporate sponsors to hand out candy if anybody is interested.
Did you hear that out in our vast YouTube audience? The, well, you know, we should just piggyback on that Bishop that did a song, right?
Yeah.
Over 300,000 YouTube views in three, four days.
Don't we usually get asked any person questions?
Sure.
If you had to choose between getting rid of your right arm or the internet for the rest of your life, which one would you choose and why?
I would get rid of the internet because I can always ask someone else what they're looking at on the internet. But I can't ask someone to do the things that I would do with an arm.
True.
Interesting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was a tough question.